TV ready? Alrighty. Welcome to the Lincoln City Council Meeting of July 28th, 2025. Please be advised that a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chambers by the northwest door. Let us all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a short moment of silent meditation. Please remain standing if you're able to.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The order of the business of the city council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda. Under public hearing, anyone wishing to speak on an item must first register and sign in at the table located in the lobby. The council shall require any member of the public addressing the council to identify themselves, the name of any organization represented by such person, and their address, unless the address requirement is waived to protect the security of the individual. Each speaker should state whether they are speaking in favor or in opposition to the item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. Anyone wishing to speak on an agenda item should come forward after the clerk reads the item and the applicant has presented. After public comments, the applicant may make one short rebuttal. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last Mondays of the month immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on an issue not on the agenda for that date nor planned for a future agenda. We ask that all speakers strive for civility and allow for the business of council to proceed unimpeded. Tonight is one of those public comment evenings. Will the clerk please call the first item of business?
Our first item of business today for our city council meeting of Monday, July 28th, 2025 is our consent agenda, Sections 1, 2, and 3.
Is there anyone here to speak on an item on the consent agenda? Director Weber.
Good afternoon, City Council. My name is Ryan Weber, Director at Lincoln City Libraries, 136 South 14th Street. On behalf of the library and the library board, I'm pleased to recommend Dr. Marilyn Moore as an appointee to the Lincoln City Libraries Board for a term that would run from September of 2025 through December of 2032. Marilyn would be replacing outgoing member Dan Sloan, who has served since 2018. Dr. Moore has been a proud Lincoln City Libraries cardholder for 53 years and has outstanding professional experience as a teacher, as a former and longtime Associate Superintendent of Lincoln Public Schools, and as a past president of Bryan College of Health Sciences. She's also served on multiple boards, including Lincoln Community Foundation, Lincoln Symphony Orchestra, Community Health Endowment, History Nebraska, and I could go on and on. She's a very community and civic-minded person. And we believe, in short, that Marilyn has the experience to help the library thrive as a board member, and we're pleased to have her fill that role, so we offer support for Dr. Moore. I'd like to introduce Dr. Moore.
Dr. Moore.
Thank you, Brody, and thanks to all of you for your service to this community. Elected public office is true community service, and thank you all for doing that. I think the libraries in Lincoln are one of Lincoln's great treasures, and they are so connected to the children and the families, and the seniors, and every other population that lives in this city. I care a lot about literacy. I care a lot about learning. I care a lot about democracy. I care a lot about access to information, and libraries are connected to all of this. So it is a great honor to be nominated for this position, and I look forward to servicing the community if you choose to endorse me. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. Any questions from council? No, just a thank you. Councilman Duden.
Dr. Moore, I think you're one of those individuals like myself that does not accept retirement. You just keep on giving, so I appreciate your service. Thank you very much.
It is a wonderful stage of life to be able to say yes to opportunities to serve this community, and I'm grateful for that. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. Thank you, Director.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak on a consent item?
Good evening. Elizabeth Elliott, Director of Lincoln Transportation and Utilities, and it's my honor to introduce you to Lauren Obermeyer, who I'm suggesting a recommendation for the Startran Advisory Board. Lauren not only has background in economics and community development, but she is currently the Director of Business Development at the Lincoln Partnership for Economic Development over at the Chamber. We previously had a position filled by Chamber Representative. That term is up, and Lauren has graciously been willing to serve in that role. In her role currently at the Chamber, she is responsible for attracting and retaining businesses in Lincoln area to support economic growth. And as we all know, one of the key factors for many businesses is making sure they have a workforce that can be connected to where they work, and that is one of our primary goals at Startran. And having that perspective and having that connection to the business development is really exciting to have with Lauren on this. So with that, I'll turn it over to Lauren and let her introduce herself to all of you.
Yeah, thank you, Liz. Thank you for the time this afternoon. I appreciate the consideration as well. Like she mentioned, I'm with the Lincoln Partnership for Economic Development, doing business development and working within employers for attracting and expanding businesses. While expanding businesses, we're talking about employment and how to get people out there. And so already I've had a lot of conversation about accessibility for Startran. So I'd like the opportunity to learn more about Startran, and accessibility is really important to me, and just having it open to the public and see what I can help with, so I appreciate the time.
Absolutely. Thank you. Any questions from the council? Alrighty, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on an item on the consent agenda? Mr. Trivish.
Hello and good evening, councilmembers. My name is Chris Trivish, Chief Communications Officer for the City of Lincoln, 555 South 10th Street. It is my pleasure to introduce Brian Murray to you today and recommend his appointment to the Telecommunications Cable Advisory Board. Brian's experience with the state of Nebraska makes him a great fit for this appointment. He has worked for more than six years as a legislative aide with extensive work in the Legislature's Transportation and Telecommunications Committee. And Brian brings a deep understanding of state telecommunications policy that will provide a valuable perspective to the city's telecommunications cable advisory board. I will now turn things over to Brian to tell you more about himself and answer any questions you may have about his nomination.
Hello, members of the city council. My name is Brian Murray, 6107 Northwest Second Circle, Apartment 51. I'm before you today for consideration for my appointment to the Telecommunications Cable Television Advisory Board. I'd like to thank the mayor for considering me for this position, and if appointed, I hope to serve the citizens of Lincoln very well. By way of background, I was born and raised in Omaha, Nebraska, but I've been living in Lincoln full-time for the past about 10 years. I was a graduate of Miller West High School, where my appreciation for public policy was sparked by competing on my high school debate team, which I think Councilman Weber can relate to. I later ended up working on some campaigns and specifically ended up on Senator DeWor's campaign, and she liked me enough, I guess, to hire me into her office to work first as her administrative aide and now as her legislative aide. She worked on Transportation Telecommunications Committee, which, infrastructure in general, because of a high school debate topic, has always been something that fascinated me. And so this really was a great opportunity for me just to learn more generally about the issue. There are a lot of changes that are coming in the telecommunications space, either just in the past few years or coming in the near future. I believe that my role as her legislative aide has given me a great insight into state-level policies, but then also I have just taken a niche interest in national-level policies and follow a few different publications on telecommunications space and updates and things of that nature. And so I think that my position, my knowledge, my knowledge base gives me a great opportunity to serve the city of Lincoln well, and I hope to do that. I'd like to thank the mayor for consideration of this, for you all for listening to me, Senator DeWor for hiring me originally, and I'd also like to say hi to my mom, who's probably watching tonight, so.
Always important. Are there any questions for Mr. Murray? I guess I only have one question. You said you're from Omaha, but you call Lincoln home now. Would you say you have a preference for one if one city's better than the other?
I will just say that I currently live in Lincoln. I'll let that speak for itself.
Alrighty, well, thank you for your willingness to serve.
Of course, thank you.
I appreciate your diplomacy.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak on an item on the consent agenda? Mr. Trivish.
Hello and good evening, councilmembers. My name is Chris Trivish, Chief Communications Officer for the City of Lincoln, 555 South 10th Street. It is my pleasure to introduce Brian Murray to you today and recommend his appointment to the Telecommunications Cable Advisory Board. Brian's experience with the state of Nebraska makes him a great fit for this appointment. He has worked for more than six years as a legislative aide with extensive work in the Legislature's Transportation and Telecommunications Committee. And Brian brings a deep understanding of state telecommunications policy that will provide a valuable perspective to the city's telecommunications cable advisory board. I will now turn things over to Brian to tell you more about himself and answer any questions you may have about his nomination.
Hello, members of the city council. My name is Brian Murray, 6107 Northwest Second Circle, Apartment 51. I'm before you today for consideration for my appointment to the Telecommunications Cable Television Advisory Board. I'd like to thank the mayor for considering me for this position, and if appointed, I hope to serve the citizens of Lincoln very well. By way of background, I was born and raised in Omaha, Nebraska, but I've been living in Lincoln full-time for the past about 10 years. I was a graduate of Miller West High School, where my appreciation for public policy was sparked by competing on my high school debate team, which I think Councilman Weber can relate to. I later ended up working on some campaigns and specifically ended up on Senator DeWor's campaign, and she liked me enough, I guess, to hire me into her office to work first as her administrative aide and now as her legislative aide. She worked on Transportation Telecommunications Committee, which, infrastructure in general, because of a high school debate topic, has always been something that fascinated me. And so this really was a great opportunity for me just to learn more generally about the issue. There are a lot of changes that are coming in the telecommunications space, either just in the past few years or coming in the near future. I believe that my role as her legislative aide has given me a great insight into state-level policies, but then also I have just taken a niche interest in national-level policies and follow a few different publications on telecommunications space and updates and things of that nature. And so I think that my position, my knowledge, my knowledge base gives me a great opportunity to serve the city of Lincoln well, and I hope to do that. I'd like to thank the mayor for consideration of this, for you all for listening to me, Senator DeWor for hiring me originally, and I'd also like to say hi to my mom, who's probably watching tonight, so.
Always important. Are there any questions for Mr. Murray? I guess I only have one question. You said you're from Omaha, but you call Lincoln home now. Would you say you have a preference for one if one city's better than the other?
I will just say that I currently live in Lincoln. I'll let that speak for itself.
Alrighty, well, thank you for your willingness to serve.
Of course, thank you.
I appreciate your diplomacy.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak on an item on the consent agenda? Seeing no one else coming forward to testify, Madam Clerk, we can proceed.
We cannot vote on these items. Item 1A is appointing Dr. Marilyn Moore to the Lincoln City Library Board for a term to expire August 31st of 2032, introduced by Bowers.
So moved.
Seconded.
Seconded by Beckius. Any discussion?
Here, here.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Beckius?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Item 1B is appointing Lauren Obermeyer to the Startran Advisory Board for a term to expire October 20th of 2027, introduced by Bowers.
So moved.
Seconded.
Seconded by Washington. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Item 1C is appointing Brian Murray to the Telecommunication Cable Television Advisory Board for a term to expire July 1st, 2028, introduced by Bowers.
So moved.
Seconded.
Seconded by Beckius. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Washington?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Item 1D is reappointing Benny Schob to the Telecommunication Cable Television Advisory Board for a term to expire July 1st of 2027, introduced by Bowers.
So moved.
Yes, seconded.
Seconded by Washington. Any discussion?
Who's this guy?
Yeah, an excellent nomination. Seeing no further discussion, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Schob?
Wait, yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Item 1E is approving the on-call Construction Engineering Services Task Order Agreement between the City of Lincoln and Alfred Benish &amp; Company for the 9th and 10th Streets and A and D Streets Signal Project, introduced by Bowers.
So moved.
Seconded.
Seconded by Beckius. Madam, any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Duden?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. That concludes our consent agenda. We'll move to Section 4 of our public hearing liquor resolutions. I'll call Items 4A and B together. Items 4A and B is application of Escape Lincoln LLC doing business as Escape Lincoln for a Class C liquor license located at 815 O Street, Suites 100 through 200, and the related manager application of Abby Bartholomew.
Alrighty.
Hi, my name's Abby Bartholomew.
I'm on the clerk.
We're the owners of Escape Lincoln. Address is 815 O Street here in Lincoln, 68508. And we are applying for a liquor license to responsibly serve alcohol during private and public events like murder mysteries, trivia, team building. It would be between the hours of 10:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. Our goal is to enhance our guest experience, support downtown gatherings, and offer more flexible event options. Alcohol would be served just obviously during business hours and at designated special events by our trained staff in full compliance with local regulations. We would not be allowing alcohol inside of our escape rooms just to ensure the safety of minors that might be present. And we're committed to creating a fun and safe space, and we appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. Any questions from council?
I have one question.
Councilwoman Washington.
Thank you for coming forward. It sounds like a really interesting idea. Can you tell me, will you have any limitations on how much alcohol you'll serve someone before they go into the escape room?
Well, I think that, excuse me, for the most part, the alcohol would be just served during our, sorry, during our special events, so like our murder mysteries and stuff like that. The only time that people would potentially drink before they go in to do an escape room is typically with like a team-building activity after work or something. So I don't know that it's a natural time where people are going to want to drink a lot, like. And our license would be limited to canned beverages, so it's not like we're, they're not going to want to buy like a 12-pack, if that makes sense.
And the amount of time that they're on-site is limited. So they'll create their booking for when they're in the escape room, and they typically come 15 to 30 minutes ahead of time, so it doesn't allow for too much lingering.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Any other questions?
I can't quite grasp the business model here, but you have people that just want to stay there?
No. No.
If you're trying to escape.
So our escape room space, they come, they do an escape room. They're usually just pretty excited, and then they go to have dinner or something else downtown. Our event space downstairs, we are hosting things like murder mystery parties, so it's a two-hour event where you play a character and you're trying to solve a mystery. So we're just thinking, you know, adding certain ready-to-drink beverages just adds to that experience.
Alrighty. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone from the public wishing to testify on Items 4A and 4B? Seeing no one coming forward to testify?
Ooh, my turn?
Yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Mr. Turner, seeing no one else coming forward, I make a motion that we approve Item 4A and 4B.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Duden. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Beckius?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Okay, that concludes Section 4 of our agenda. We shall move on to Section 5, which is our public hearing resolutions. I'll call Item 5A. Item 5A is authorizing an application to the Nebraska Game and Parks Commission for land and water conservation fund grant for renovating and upgrading two ballfields at Jensen Park.
Hello, Director.
Good evening. Maggie Stuckey-Ross, Parks and Recreation, 3131 O Street. I'm here today for Item 5A, which authorizes the city to apply for a land and water conservation fund grant yet this summer. This is a standard resolution. You've seen meet these before. Essentially, it confirms that we're eligible and formalizes the grant application process. It allows our staff to submit the necessary documentation and comply with the grant requirements, and it does not require local matching funds at this stage. If approved, this action simply enables us to move forward while potentially positioning us to access funding for upgrades at two of the ballfields at Jensen Park, which has been advocated for by Counselor Duden and other interested residents. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Alrighty. Thank you, Director. Any questions from council? Councilwoman Washington.
Director Stuckey-Ross, I had a question, but I think you just answered it. But I wanted to just go ahead just to confirm. In the materials that we got ahead of time, it said that we needed to have budgeted already the city's match, but you just said we don't have to have it on hand at the time.
That's correct. We are certifying that we have the match when we accept the grant, which won't be for several months.
Alright, thank you very much.
Any other questions? Councilman Duden.
Maggie, isn't this part of Lincoln Youth Athletics, a desire to help improve the infrastructure for youth sports here in Lincoln?
Yes.
It's something that was kind of initiated at a council meeting last summer when Corey Reiman came forward and complained about the condition of the ballfields. And since then, we've had an assessment. We've allowed the public to have a voice on that as well. And it's the hope of Lincoln Youth Athletics to raise funds to match the city's contribution, and hopefully we'll have $1.2 million to put into those two ballfields, and they'll be tournament-ready probably in 2027, so. But it's also something that I've been working on with Maggie for some time, since last summer as well, so. So I appreciate the city's support and Maggie's work on this as well.
Yeah, we're happy to do it and excited to see these ballfields come to life at Jensen.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions for Director Stuckey-Ross? Councilman Bowers?
I guess I just have a point of order of information. We typically do a rotating introduction, so like Items 5A through 5B were introduced by me. Tom, do you want to do the introduction for 5A, so that way formally it comes from you since this is an issue you've been working on?
Sure.
Not that it changes the flow of anything, but you know, since this is a project you've been working on, you know.
Appreciate that.
Alrighty. Thank you, Director.
Thank you.
Is there anyone from the public wishing to testify on Item 5A? If so, please come forward now. Seeing no one else come testify, Madam Clerk, please proceed.
I'll call Item 5B. Item 5B is accepting and approving the report of new and pending claims against the city for July 1st through July 15th of 2025.
Is there anyone from the public wishing to testify on this item for accepting and approving pending claims against the city? If so, please come forward now. Alrighty. Seeing no one coming forward to discuss claims, we can proceed with calling the next item.
I'll call Item 5C. Approving an agreement between the City of Lincoln on behalf of the Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department and the Nebraska Association of Local Health Directors to accept a two-year sub-grant in the amount of $199,000 to address issues associated with health equity concerns and social determinants of health through community health workers and community settings to screen, educate, and empower diverse community members to address a range of prevention and healthcare issues from July 1st, 2025 through June 30th of 2027.
Hello, Director.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. Carrie Kernan, Health Director with the Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department, 3131 O Street. The contract in front of you is with the Nebraska Association of Local Health Directors. This will be our third year where the funding supports a community health worker on my team to do social determinants of health screening for individuals presenting to our clinic immunizations, STIs. Yeah, so, and I can share too, over the last, this is starting the third year, the last two years, the three most predominant needs that are identified is, one, access to health insurance, access to primary care providers, food security, and addressing or linking to mental health resources. Happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from council for the director? Alrighty.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Councilman Duden.
Is any of this assist the homeless?
As they present it to the clinic, absolutely. Yes. Yeah, we help everybody that comes through the doors. Yep.
Alrighty, seeing no other questions. Thank you, Director. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to testify on Item 5C? Seeing no one coming forward, Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
I'll call Item 5D. Comprehensive Plan Conformance 25003. Application of the Lincoln Police Department to review as to conformance with the 2050 Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan. A proposed amendment to the capital improvement program by adding the police property storage remodel for fiscal year 2425 on the property journey located at 635 J Street.
Hello, Chief.
Good evening. Happy to be here. Mashawn Morrow, Chief, Lincoln Police Department, 575 South 10. As stated, this is a CIP budget amendment that would allow for the remodel of 635 J Street to increase our ability for property storage.
Are there any questions for Chief Morrow? Councilman Beckius.
Thank you, Chief. Since we're adding this to the, we're amending the CIP here, do you want to talk about the funding behind the remodel, just as we often talk about when we are addressing the capital improvement plan, the funding behind those capital improvements?
Absolutely. So currently, the amendment is estimated at $2.2 million, and these funds have already been identified and allocated through savings over the last two years at the Lincoln Police Department. So all of the funding has been identified, and we're not asking for additional funding from the general budget to accomplish the goal.
Thank you, Chief.
Any other questions? Seeing no other questions, thank you, Chief. Appreciate it. Is there anyone from the public wishing to testify on Item 5D? If so, please come forward now. Seeing no one else from the public testify on this item, Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
I'll call Item 5E. Miscellaneous 25007. Application of Oxford House Inc. and Oxford House Hannah Point to request reasonable accommodation under the Fair Housing Act in Chapter 1.28 of the Lincoln Municipal Code to the occupancy limits for collaborative living facilities established by Section 27.62.050D. Applicants request an accommodation to allow up to eight persons to occupy the collaborative living facility at 6010 South 81st Street.
Is the applicant here to present?
Good evening. My name is Mark Falsen. I'm an attorney with the Rimboldt Letty Law Firm located at 1128 Lincoln Mall, Lincoln, Nebraska. I, along with my colleague Nicole Miller, who is here this evening, serve as local counsel for applicant Oxford House Hannah Point and Oxford House Inc. for the property located at 6010 South 81st Street here in Lincoln. On behalf of our client, we submitted a request for reasonable accommodation pursuant to the Lincoln Municipal Code, the Nebraska Fair Housing Act, and the Federal Fair Housing Act. As you are aware, the planning commission voted 6 to 0 to recommend approval of the requested reasonable accommodation as a collaborative living facility with up to eight unrelated individuals to reside in that location. A little background on Oxford Houses. Oxford Houses are homes for persons recovering from alcoholism and/or drug addiction who are no longer using alcohol or drugs. Thus, the residents of these properties are located or deemed to be disabled for purposes of federal, state, and local law. Oxford Houses provide an opportunity for recovering alcoholics and addicts to maintain sobriety in a supportive living environment that does not require the provision of any services or treatment. Oxford Houses are democratically self-run and financially self-supporting by their residents. As was noted by the planning department in its summary report, the residents are clearly disabled for purposes of the law. The application demonstrates the necessity of communal sober living. Granting the reasonable accommodation request comports with the comprehensive plan. Permitting eight individuals to reside at this location would not exceed building code requirements. Moreover, and I quote from Director Kerry's comments in the report, "The accommodation would not substantially alter the physical property nor impose any undue financial or administrative burdens on the city." One point I would like to make before handing it over to Dan Hahn, who's the Outreach Services Representative of Oxford House. There's been comments in the paper, there's been comments online, there's been comments submitted. online, there's been comments submitted to the Planning Commission that simply are not, hold no basis in fact. At the end of the day, the current residences of this house, which are currently four individuals, have been subjected to significant harassment by neighbors. This includes flying drones near their windows, by their bathroom door, by their bathroom windows. This includes cutting their cable at their house. This includes engaging in certain behavior to try and drive these individuals from this neighborhood. That's hardly Nebraska nice. That's not the behaviors we want to see from people here in the state of Lincoln. We have met all of the necessary requirements under federal law, under state law, as well as your ordinances, and we respectfully request that the resolution be adopted and that, again, a reasonable accommodation be granted. There are a number of individuals from Oxford House here this evening, and with your permission, we're going to try and limit that, we understand time is limited, but I'd like to ask Dan Hahn from Oxford House to come forward at this time. And then I come back and answer any questions you may have.
Good evening, council. My name is Dan Hahn, I'm a recovering alcoholic. Been clean and sober since July 18th of 2007. Just recently celebrated a birthday, and I'm a regional manager for Oxford House Incorporated. I found myself in an Oxford House in Wichita, Kansas, in April of '08, and I've been clean and sober ever since. Dedicated my life to helping our mission, created a culture in the Midwest, and we have 300-plus recovery homes in three states. And this house is centered and catered around helping the ladies that live there find a new way to live and master comfortable long-term sobriety. We are a proven model that's existed since 1975. There are so many things that I could tell you, and you know, of course, being around the length of time I have, I can throw out all the quick things and things that make us look well, but we care. In this particular house, there are things that we have decided, and I'm sure you're aware, that we've tried to do to be more accommodating. But, there's been a lot of accusations that I've seen are simply untrue and unfounded because they're not speaking to the members of the house, which we encourage. Early on, when the house opened, two of our members left cards multiple times on neighbors' doors to try to get them to come over and talk to them. Has it been perfect? No. Is any house in the neighborhood perfect? No. What I can tell you is, is that that house has an ironclad rule that if someone returns to use or drinking, they're immediately expelled. I don't know any other neighbors that can say that. We've tried very hard to be good neighbors, and we have a commitment to try to open our doors. I humbly ask you guys to consider the safety of these girls and the other 200 members across Lincoln that are getting well. If you study the Oxford House model, which is readily accessible, the Surgeon General's report in 2018 shows that we are a proven model in recovery, helping people find and sustain long-term recovery. SAMSA, the government administration that supports recovery, recognizes us as such. My job and the other outreach workers that work in this state to teach the members how to operate the model themselves. Whoa, how can addicts and alcoholics help themselves? DePaul University has found we have an 87% success rate if a member stays 18 months. I and many others are a testimony to that. I have 20 felony convictions in four states, and I've taken care of all of those. I have not had so much as a speeding ticket in 18 years. I love this model with all our heart and ask for humility with humility that these girls continue to live in that home. We've made some concessions with making sure that the lawn is taken care of, because sometimes ladies have a hard time with weed eaters and things like that, so we've made sure they got a professional lawn service. I want to have an open house and invite the neighbors in so they can really see, because I do understand. I do understand perception, and I do understand what we don't know. It's an amazing thing to be able to rent a house. Those women pay $2,700 a month to the person that owns that home, and he was nice enough and kind enough to buy that for him. Well, there's a clear indication those women aren't using because they've done that without outside support. They have very nice internet, a very nice home on the inside, and they've had to live with their blinds down. Now, have they been perfect? No, there's been some issues with parking. I can tell you this, that a lot of the rumors that I've heard about the police interaction was simply proven untrue at the Planning Commission. Yes, the police have been there. I am required, as a regional manager, to fill out an incident report on the things that qualify in a house so that we're aware of it. I have people I have to report to when things happen. We are a trusted resource to the treatment centers. We are on the front lines of fighting this opioid epidemic. We have not had any overdoses in that house. We have not, now, has there been some, as I said before, has there been somebody come home and be under the influence? Yes, and they were immediately asked to leave, and on top of that, shown somewhere safe to go, detox or treatment. So, I want to emphasize, you know, and I know that I'm from the outside and I'm representing Nebraska, the Department of Health and Human Services makes sure that we're there continuing to be available because we're so effective. We've grown from 30 houses in the state of Nebraska in 2017 to, we're fixing to have our 100-house celebration, and that's all over, from North Platte to Grand Island, we are all over the state. Good houses and good neighborhoods is the linchpin of our model, and we want to continue that. We open our doors to anybody in this community. Neighbors, when we get to, when I or my staff or the members open houses, we offer our door codes. You can come in, it's a community setting, you can come in and look at our books, sit in a house meeting, have a cup of coffee, and really see what we're doing in there. Now, like any house on the block, it's not perfect, you know, and we have shortened the amount of people that live there. Like the prodigal son, you can come back to the community and succeed. We are at low cost to the taxpayer, we're an effective proven model, and I humbly ask for you to see your way to allow that Oxford House Hannah Point to continue to exist on behalf of the folks in recovery. And I open it up for any questions you might have for me.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council for the applicants? Councilwoman Washington.
First, I want to thank you both for coming forward, Mr. Folsom and Mr. Hahn. I do have a couple of questions. I watched the hearing for the Planning Commission, so some of my questions come from that and some are generated just from this evening. I'm familiar with the Oxford House model, and the necessity, that you have to prove that there is a necessity for treatment, that it's good. You mentioned a couple of times at the previous hearing, and you just alluded to it once here, and so I'd like to talk a little bit about SAMSA and DHHS. At the previous hearing, you said that you fall underneath SAMSA, and can you?
That's inaccurate.
Okay. Can you tell me what is the relationship between Oxford House and SAMSA? Do you receive grant monies? Do you receive, I mean, can you tell me what that is?
What SAMSA's role with the Department of Health and Human Services is, I would have no knowledge of that. I do know that there's a line there that promotes the expansion by putting more outreach workers in the field. The particulars of how that's put together, I have nothing to do with, but I do know SAMSA and the Department of Health and Human Services have a relationship that put us in a position to expand.
Okay, so, do you receive grants from SAMSA? Does Oxford House receive grants from SAMSA?
No ma'am.
Does Oxford House receive grants from DHHS?
I'm unsure of the verbiage. I know that there is executed contracts to provide field support to teach the model and consistency in the model. How that's worded, I don't want to be on the record because I'm unsure of that. I don't have anything to do with the funding that puts us there. I have to do with it, I'm a field general, would be my accurate. I have 17 and a half years of extensive experience. I currently live in a house, because I live in a community in northern Oklahoma, I live in Ponca City, and I was able to have some influence, experienced influence to help us expand in a small town. So, I'm a, you know, I'm a product of it. When it comes to those things outside that, I just know that what, you know, like I say, I'm kind of like a field general. They show me the ammunition and I decide where to fire it.
Can you tell me a little bit about your involvement at the regional level to the houses here, or this house here in Lincoln? I mean, you've explained that there is sort of the National Regional Chapter, there's, you have so many houses that you're the field general for, and then you have this house in particular. I am, it's been operating for three years, yes? And so, first tell me a little bit about your relationship to this house, and then I'd like to ask you a little, a few questions about the residents.
Absolutely. So, my relationship with this house is, and I'm not always available for this, but I did happen to be in town and was able to go through and look at the house. Every house that opens, I'm either FaceTiming or physically there. I happened to be in town, so, you know, my first things were, is there a need, working with the local staff and the members? Yes. Is this house represent what we are? Yes. And is everything up to code and safe for the ladies there, which includes basement egress and things like that? At that point, the house was walked, and then my role overall to give you, I'm kind of the carrier of the culture, and I mentor the, I have a level of management below me, which is a senior outreach coordinator, and then I have the outreach workers in the field. And we, and being that we are doing work on behalf of Department of Health and Human Services, as Oxford House Incorporated, data, things like that, that is used to help make sure we're fighting this opioid epidemic at the right levels, which includes setting up trainings, stigma reduction, all those things. So I'm just above kind of making sure that we're getting all the resources we need to be able to stay in front of stuff, including trying to be good neighbors, which is where we're at. You know, I do realize there has been some obstacles in that home with the parking, stuff like that, and those, you know, the decisions that were made to adjust that was done in cooperation with the members of the city, or members of the Oxford Houses, the other homes in the city. We have 207 members across town, and they all support each other. So that's, I just kind of help make sure that I have experience and culture to send down the line.
Okay. Let's talk a little bit about the financial necessity, sort of the rules, house rules, and then we'll talk about financial necessity. So, if a person who lives there becomes active in drinking or drug use, they're asked to leave. You mentioned just now that they're provided or they're shown that there's another option for them, so they go to detox or something. So can you describe how that happens? Are they just asked to leave that moment, and then they have to find their own way to someplace else? Does someone call an Uber for them?
There is a wide variety of how that can be addressed, and actually, actually, it's really not that wide. If there's an admission as such, there's a special meeting held, votes and motions to expel. Each Oxford House is chartered, okay, and the charter comes from Oxford House Incorporated in Silver Spring, Maryland. On that charter, it says three things. The house must operate democratically. It must be financially self-supporting, and it must evict anyone that uses or drinks from the membership immediately. Okay, so there's a special meeting held, and the house will work with that member in their transition out. If, if there is need for training or things like that, that's provided monthly for all the houses in town to make sure that they are equipped to handle such situations.
And then, over the course of the three years, how many women have been expelled from the house?
I would not have that number.
Does it feel about, is there a regular, I mean, would you be able to say that in any year, a house loses or expels a certain number? And does this feel like it's in line with that?
This house is in line, in line with how we operate by the average, just from an eyeball glance. I don't have the exact numbers of what that is, but I do know that our length of stay in the state of Nebraska is somewhere between nine and a half and 10 months per member. So we are transitional living, but a person can stay as long as they would like, as long as they remain substance-free, pay their equal expenses on time, and aren't disruptive. So that facilitates our need for expansion, because what studies have found is that recovery happens for folks at different rates. Some people need the house longer than others. In my case, I've never left.
So, the residents have to pay the bills on time? You said the rent is $2,700 a month, so?
Correct.
Are four residents the right number for that?
So, the house has a reserve, and the way we, the way those houses are set up, we know what the minimum threshold is for members. At four, they're going to be okay, and then they're, and shortly they'll have, they'll have new members move in. Typically, that house is set between six and nine, but now we've taken a bed, so, you know, it varies all over the place, but the house, the way the house is set up with its viability, they're able to handle financial situations by their weekly costs, which they adjust on their own. So they know what their bills are, they have access to be able to figure what it is by member that'll take care of the bills they have, and they've been very successful at that.
And what do you think the therapeutically necessary number is for that house?
Well, being ma'am, that they need to operate democratically, we're ready to get some more members in there, but four plus.
Thank you.
Alrighty.
Mr. Chair, thank you for letting me have so much time.
Yeah, absolutely. Are there other questions from council? Councilman Duden?
Yes, to the attorney here, I felt that you demonized the neighbors at the Planning Department. I watched that, and I heard some of the same testimony already tonight from you. You mentioned a couple of complaints. Has anybody been arrested?
So, the genesis of that was the public comments, some of which were submitted anonymously to the Planning Commission. So the comments with respect to the neighborhood and the neighbors was simply addressing those comments that were made to the Planning Commission.
Okay, but you made some comments that there were drones flown at the house.
Correct.
Was anybody arrested in regards to that?
I have no idea.
So you have no idea if it was a neighbor or what then?
Well, again, just like the neighbors who submitted comments online, some anonymously, making various allegations that are unsubstantiated. At the end of the day, what I know is this, that the females, the ladies, the women who live in this house have been subjected to significant harassment living there.
Can you expand on that a little bit?
Yeah, I gave the drone example, I gave the cutting of the cable. Dan, do you have some other examples? He's more?
I'm sorry, I'm still stuck with you.
Yeah, I appreciate that, but at the end?
You talked about the cable being cut, was that reported to the police?
It was reported, it wasn't reported to the police, it was reported to Spectrum, the cable company, who in fact confirmed that it didn't cut itself, it was cut maliciously.
Okay, and was anybody arrested on that?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, so you don't know if it was a neighbor or what then?
That's correct.
Okay, so it could have been someone associated with the house, or someone that was expelled from the house?
Well, certainly the residents of the house said it wasn't them.
Okay. So I'm just trying to find out what types of harassments took place, because you've described a couple of things that you really don't know who was responsible for them.
At the end of the day, I know that I can report to you and the council what occurred to the residents of this house. That was also in conjunction with or within the same timeframe as these complaints and comments were made to the city Planning Commission relative to this application, as well as before that.
Sir, I've got a question for you.
Absolutely.
If you could answer. I know, I've been to the house myself, and I was never invited in. I identified myself as a city councilman for the City of Lincoln, that district. And I asked a few questions, that sort of thing. I felt that the people were there were fairly defensive. There was no invitation to come into the house.
I can explain that.
So, what's that?
I can explain why.
Okay, please do.
If you told them you had anything to do with the city, them having a camera panned on their house at all times and watching the, and watching the other houses in the city have to go through these things, I think the last person they want to see is somebody from the city knocking on their door. They, this is, they, since this house has opened, okay, it's been on the verge of where we are today for quite some time. You know, and as the, and I'm not, I'm not, I speak to you, sir, with the utmost humility. You know, and as the, and I'm not, I'm not, I speak to you, sir, with the utmost humility. We want to be neighbors, okay? And I can assure you, if you went up to that door and just said you were a neighbor up the street, that's a whole lot different. And if you said you wanted to come into the house just to see what's going on, I live up the street, I assure you, they'd have no problem with that. So I would say that the reason, between the cameras and saying you're with the city, they probably were defensive.
Can you expand upon the cameras?
I, I do not, all I know is, is they're pointed at the house and have been, whether they're active or not, I'm unsure if they're even still there, I don't know. But I know as of a month ago, there were cameras panned on the house. So, and that's by the neighbor. And the members of the house, the members of the house, that causes, that causes them to feel a little unwelcome. I can also tell you that there have been some valid complaints about people coming up to the back door, okay? Well, that's because the parking was becoming, the police were getting called about the parking, which we're addressing. So, that, and also to the council, I want to let you know that against our model, our model is, in a chartered women's house, they are allowed to have overnight guests. Typically, a house will decide what that number is. That has been eliminated from this house to try to be more, that has been eliminated, and that has been done since before the last planning meeting. But when the notifications of people coming up to the back door happened, that was not only servants of Oxford House coming to check on the home or provide support, talk about a fundraiser coming up, whatever the case may be, and it was also boyfriends, and they were parking somewhere else to keep cars off the street. It's wide open back there, so they walked up to the door. Again, I don't know if there's no parking signs out in front of there, I don't believe there are, I don't want to, as far as breaking the law, but I do know that we need, we're working to scale it back to be more accommodating, you know? And nobody's standing up here saying that six to eight women living in the house for recovery, you know, most of our Oxford Houses across the country will have potluck night at the house, or movie night. None of that's been able to occur. As a matter of fact, the local Nebraska area has even had to cut the support services to that house to try to be more accommodating to the neighbors. Because what we do is have meetings come by, make sure, view house meetings, make sure if somebody needs some support or training, whatever it is, we're a network and a community. And that house has been just kind of stuck out to the side for the benefits that the rest of the houses in our network have. We do want people to come over, and there will be, there will be an open house forthcoming if we're lucky enough to continue to exist.
Okay, that was a little longer than an answer to the question, but-
I apologize, but I'm passionate about it, I'm sorry, sir.
Sure, I understand that. When did the Oxford House start there, this location?
This location?
Yes.
I wouldn't have the exact date on me, but I know it's been three years.
Okay. And do you know when the ordinance was created for collaborative living facilities in Lincoln?
I'm unsure. I know I heard it mentioned at the last hearing, but I'm unsure. It could have been before that, I'm unaware of that information.
Have you been in conformance with the ordinance?
I am unsure of what the ordinance is. All I, all that I have education on is that we are disabled, and that we seek reasonable accommodation, that's all I know, to live in that house as disabled. Like I said, my experience is somewhere else other than all that.
Well, evidently, at some point, you found out what the ordinance number was for that particular house, because you're asking for an accommodation.
I'm unsure, I'm unsure, all I know is, is we were asking for an accommodation. Originally with, you would have to correct me, originally, it was nine, I think we voluntarily took a date, is that correct?
Correct.
And that, and I only know that because of being here at that last hearing. You know, the only thing that I have experience on is that we want to be good neighbors, we don't want to exceed, we don't want to break zoning laws, but we want to have a reasonable accommodation based on our disability and be a functional family.
I understand it, but-
That's it.
Kind of sounds like you've been in violation of the ordinance since its inception.
I would not, I would not know that information, I just wouldn't. I'm not connected to the city ordinance.
Yeah, if I, may I address that?
Yes, please do.
Again, you have an excellent city law department, so they can advise you, I'm not giving you legal advice. But it's very clear, based upon case law, that the Federal Fair Housing Act prevents the enforcement of zoning ordinances which have a discriminatory impact upon those in a protected class, which here is the disabled. So this, the application was filed when a resident or complained, and therefore, planning commission followed up on it, and that's when the application was filed. But again, we believe there's case law out there that would suggest that there was no need to file an application, because the enforcement of that against Oxford House would be, would have a discriminatory impact on a protected class, and here it's those who are disabled.
Okay.
Are there any other questions from council? Councilman Bowers?
I just had a couple of quick questions. How many bedrooms are in, or how many like living spaces are in the home, or how many bedrooms are-
Six bedrooms.
Six bedrooms?
Mm-hmm.
And how, we've approved other Oxford Homes in the city, do you have any information on how this is similar to that or different than that?
As far as the layout or structure?
No, just kind of like the, any of the legal reasons or legal theories why that would be, why that one would be approved and this one should not be approved.
I know of none.
Okay. You know, I saw when you mentioned the word disabled, some people's heads kind of popped up, right? And so I think sometimes when people talk about a disability, they might think, you know, total and permanent disability, right? Can you talk a little about the Federal Fair Housing's definition of disabled and disability?
Sure, it's not unlike, and I'll be honest, I'm much more familiar in the employment context, but those individuals who are, who are, suffer from alcoholism or drug addiction, to the extent they are not currently using, it is a disease, and they're deemed clearly under case law, as well as regulation, to be disabled for purposes of federal law, whether that be in the employment context or the housing context.
So, someone might have, be considered disabled underneath that legal definition, but then still be able to maintain their activities of daily living, and-
We hope so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, the city of Lincoln and the state has lost several cases to be in violation of the Federal Fair Housing Act, which has resulted in taxpayers being fronted hundreds of thousands of dollars. Can you talk to me a little bit more about the Federal Fair Housing Act? Because I feel like I didn't get enough of that from your testimony, right? And like, what would happen if Lincoln was found to be in violation of the Federal Fair Housing Act?
Well, obviously, we hope you approve the resolution here this evening, but in the event that was not approved, one avenue that we would have to seek redress of that, what we believe would be a violation of federal and state law, would be to file a lawsuit. And case law is pretty clear, in our opinion, that would be successful on that lawsuit. It's a discriminatory enforcement against a protected class. And so, we don't want to go that route, but let me be very clear, right? Where'd Johansson go? He's over there. That's not our desire, right? We just want to be good neighbors, to be able to live our lives, and we certainly, litigation is only a last resort, but the case law, in my opinion, is pretty clear, it'd be favorable towards this application.
Do you know how many police calls have been made over the past couple of years to the home?
Yeah, it was reported, I believe, in planning commission, and there were eighteen. And if you look, if you delve down those, and again, Lincoln Police was at that particular hearing, a number of those were actually from residents calling because of harassment, other incidents occurring. Also, there was one not, one medical incident, which again, some anonymous comments related to being a drug addict, she had nothing to do with that, it was just simply a health incident, which happens at many houses, unfortunately. And so it was eighteen over the course of period, and the Lincoln Police clearly testified that there was nothing unique about the calls to that house in comparison to that area.
Okay, thank you so much.
Any other questions from council? All righty, thank you. Is there anyone from the public wishing to testify on item 5E? And there may be a few, so I'll just remind, there's two podiums that you can line up at and transition from speaking out. So if the next speaker would like to come forward at the other speaker-
Thank you.
Say your name and address for the record.
My name is Carmen Mauer, I live at 1929 C Street. I appear tonight neither in support nor opposition to this particular application, but I thought that the experience at the, in the, in my neighborhood might be relevant to your consideration, and maybe the neighbors on 81st Street as well. Two years ago, almost exactly two years ago, we adopted the collaborative living ordinance. A lot of work and effort was put in by the council, as well as neighborhoods. We contacted every neighborhood association and received input and submitted it to all of you for your consideration. At that time, there was one concern that we particularly focused upon, and that was enforcement. And we asked that the ordinance maybe be beefed up with respect to enforcement, or whatever message might be sent to the city to genuinely enforce the ordinance that you passed. And so, as, have you all received the map that I handed out? So that shows you, to the best of my ability, that's a handmade map, that, that shows you the various Oxford Houses in the near south neighborhood. There are eight in our neighborhood, and you'll see that there's a ninth one just outside the neighborhood borders, and at the bottom, those are the exact addresses, according to, I believe, the Oxford House website. As recently as, about six weeks ago, seven weeks ago, in discussing, looking at this map with the planning department, I was informed that none of these locations have complied or have applied to be collaborative living facilities. And I want to be honest with you, exception, I believe one has gone to the planning department and asked for designation as a collaborative living facility, and that would be the one that's number eight on your map. I thought you would also like to know that after, shortly after the ordinance was adopted, a neighbor, not me, but I, I know my neighbors and talk to them, and we share information in emails, one of my neighbors filed a request for an investigation of the location at number three, under the, they believed that the, that location was not in compliance with collaborative living ordinance. At that time, I will tell you again, to the best of my knowledge, I've gone through emails and counted, but I believe we've requested, I think, nine times over the course of two years, just for an update. I mean, we haven't, anything more, we've just said, what is your investigation finding? What's the city's position? Has it been referred to the city attorney, and have they decided not to prosecute, which is, you know, within their prosecutorial discretion? Was there some kind of settlement? So, in any case, nine times, and we've never received any response. No response to our emails at all. So I just wanted to point that out. And in particular, it's a bit frustrating, and after the testimony by the applicants, I mean, I guess, I guess their position is that the ordinance has no force at all, that it has no teeth at all. And I would just point out, though, that on number eight, the neighbor that was nearby there wrote a letter and said, I believe that this is out of compliance with the collaborative living ordinance, because it's too close to those that are labeled two and three. And the response that he got from the planning department was, no, it's not out of compliance because two and three are not collaborative living facilities, even though we have asked for two years that those be investigated, and that we look and see whether or not they are or not. I think, let me check just real quick, I mean, I think the takeaway that I would, I would leave with you is that, first of all, we would ask, and this was an issue before, we would ask if they apply to be collaborative living facilities, apply for that designation prior to moving in individuals, so that you can determine that indeed, they are in compliance with what you believe is a proper collaborative living facility. I would hope that you'd consider periodic confirmation of that, even if they apply, how do you know that they continue to be in compliance a year, or two, three, four, five down the road?
Thank you, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, sorry, that's time.
Yeah, 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 thank you very much.
Yes, appreciate it. Any questions from council? Councilwoman Washington?
Ms. Mauer, thank you for coming forward. Only because I've been in conversation with, I think, the owner of house number eight, they are, they have reduced their numbers down to what is legally accepted right now, and they are making an application.
That's good to know.
They're not out of compliance.
That's good to know. So there is one of, one out of the eight, thank you.
Yeah, my name's Ken Burghith, I live at 8008 Hannah Point Place. And first of all, I would like to say that I absolutely respect the mission of Oxford Homes, but the one in my neighborhood is not so much that the house is there, it's the perfect storm for traffic. If you know the logistics, that house could not be in any worse position. You come off of 80th and Old Cheney, you come around an S curve to 81st Street, and then you have all the traffic from 84th Flats coming down the hill, and when all those cars are parked there, it's dangerous. I've seen at least one head-on, right there on the curve, you can't see when you pull out from Hannah Point, where I live, you come down there, there's a curb. There's four or five cars parked there, you can't see around that curb at all, you pull out and you're dead meat because they're on you. So, the location of that house for traffic couldn't be worse, and now you're talking about putting another four cars, eight or nine from the same house, in front of that? You're asking for trouble. It's not, it's not their fault, it's the location of the house. It's a disaster waiting to happen again. That's the problem. Move the house to another location. Thank you.
All righty, thank you. Any questions from council? All righty.
Good evening, council, my name is Matt Huesman. I'm here on behalf of Lincoln Christian School, 5801 South 84th Street, to speak in opposition to the proposal to increase the occupancy of the Oxford Home near Lincoln Christian School. Thank you for providing me the opportunity to speak with you this evening. Lincoln Christian School is a faith-based institution entering its 75th year in Lincoln. We are currently home to more than 900 students and over 100 staff members. The LCS building and grounds are not only home to dedicated staff and students, but are also used heavily by the community of Lincoln in a variety of ways every day throughout the year. The increase in occupancy at the Oxford Home in close proximity to the school concerns us as a school family. First and foremost, I want to be clear and specific in stating that LCS is not opposed to recovery efforts. We support effective and compassionate treatment options for all people. This upholds the dignity of people as they are made in God's image. We also hold firmly to the call to care for our neighbors in the various circumstances and situations that they face in life. Ultimately, we are charged with safeguarding the children in our care. The safety and security of our students, as well as any child using the Lincoln Christian School grounds, should be the absolute priority in this situation. The Oxford House organization itself cites that 78% of house residents have served jail time in some capacity. With this in mind, increasing the occupants of the home also comes with increased risk of dangerous situations and behaviors that could potentially put young children in concerning positions and in an unsafe environment. We desire for Lincoln Christian School to continue to be a trusted and safe place for our school families and the community members. This situation, we believe, compromises our environment. The 2025-2026 school year is weeks away. Our school grounds will be full of children, ranging from preschool all the way up to seniors in high school. Events will be taking place, and people from other communities will visit our school. Community members will continue to use our grounds, as they always do. The parents or guardians of any school in Lincoln would expect their children to be safe, and that mitigation of any risk be taken with the utmost seriousness. We would never take the chance of putting a child in a potentially harmful position, regardless of what statistics or studies show. Even one risk is one risk to many. It is our firm belief that expanding the occupancy at this specific site is not in the best interest of Lincoln Christian families. Again, we affirm the recovery and treatment processes that effectively help people, however, we do not affirm it at the expense of our student's safety, school operations, or our overall parent trust. I ask you to carefully and thoroughly consider the intellectual, physical, social, and spiritual well-being of students and the safety of their environment. Out of respect to the groups involved, those in recovery, and Lincoln Christian School stakeholders, we ask that this proposal for increase be denied, and one of the other Oxford Homes in Lincoln, not in close proximity to any school, be considered for expansion. Thank you.
All righty, thank you. Any questions from council? All righty, thank you.
Hello, my name's Shannon Rowan, I'm a resident at 50-
I'm a resident at 5933 South Eighty First Street. My husband would be here with me tonight, but he's out of town for work. So, just letting you guys know. We've lived at that house for 25 years. We were there before the flats, the apartments at Eighty Fourth Street were built. So, I'm going to talk to you about what I've seen and what I know. Because I heard some things that the attorney spoke on that really kind of upset me as a neighbor. First off, in 2023, I think, or 2022, whenever the Oxford House came about, I didn't know anything about it. I live about six houses away. Never heard anything about it until I started to see things happen in the neighborhood. Neighbors never talked about it, least to me. We kind of stayed to ourselves. But what I've seen is an increase in traffic. A lot of that came when the flats opened, those apartments there. But I've seen, and the one neighbor, I've never met him, but he talked about the head-on collisions. I've seen two. I used to work outside the home, now I work remotely. So, I've seen two head-on collisions in that neighborhood. Increased police traffic. The home is not cared for. I'm glad to hear that they're doing, you know, things to take care of it. My main concern, though, is the children, like the others have talked about somewhat. I'm concerned, my kids are grown now, but I'm going to be a grandma in October. I'm thinking about my grandkids being over, riding bikes, and things like that. I'm very concerned about this traffic. I love the mission of what Oxford House does. I think it's a valid, very important mission. I do. But I think increasing this house occupancy in a residential neighborhood, when these homes are single-family homes, that house is not a six-bedroom house. I have one of the biggest houses on the block. It's 2,000 square feet, three bedrooms. Okay? So, if it's six bedrooms, I don't know what they've done to make it six bedrooms. There's just no way it's six bedrooms. I'm concerned about that, just for our kids in the community. Okay? So, please, thank you for hearing me out, and I really appreciate your time. Any questions?
Thank you. Any question, Councilwoman Beck, yes?
I'm sorry, Shannon. Could I get your address again?
Yes, 5933 South Eighty First Street.
First, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Ready, any other questions? Thank you.
Hello, City Council. My name is Troy Seelig. I live at 6015 South Eighty First Street, which is directly across the street from the house in question. I'm here to oppose the proposal to increase the occupancy. As someone who has had family members deal with substance abuse, I fully support the recovery programs and recognize that providing transitional housing is important. However, current circumstances and impacts on our neighborhood raise serious concerns for me. My family and I have lived in that house for two years, and in that time, we've noticed several issues that are of concern. First, and it's already been addressed, is the additional traffic and the on-street parking. The street is already crowded, and adding additional residents to that house would increase that even more. They, for whatever reason, vehicles don't park in the driveway. They park on the street. And most of that ends up in front of my house or one of the neighbor's houses. And as many of the other neighbors have mentioned, it causes some, I have never seen a head-on collision, but it's come close. The second is the amount of foot traffic and vehicle traffic from folks that don't appear to be residents of the house. That includes someone who came up and knocked on my door at about nine o'clock the other night, when I was trying to get my kids to bed, and asked where his vehicle had gone. I don't know what to tell you. And finally, the, obviously, the police calls are concerning. Within a year of living in our house, we had one of the residents of the home try to make entry into our house. That was July 19th of 2024. It was at 3:30 a.m. Long story short, there was banging on the doors, banging on the windows, to a point where I thought they were going to break the windows in. My, my wife called the police, and I do have three young children. Not only is that disturbing to me and my wife, it was actually traumatizing to my kids. So, I guess my, my overall goal speaking tonight is that I urge you to consider the broad impact of, on our neighborhood, not necessarily just to consider the individuals in recovery, but also the homeowners and our ability to live in a safe, quiet environment to raise, raise our families.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions from council? Councilwoman Washington?
Mr. Seelig, thank you for coming forward. You said that someone tried to break into your house?
Yes.
And you called the police?
Yes.
Did the police get there in time to meet the person who tried to break in?
They did.
And were they a resident of the house?
Of the Oxford House, correct.
Of the Oxford House across the street? And do you know what happened with that?
I don't know the full extent. The police took her and came back and said, oh, it was just a wrong address, or something like that. But to me, 3:30 in the morning, that's not an acceptable argument. Wrong address, our house, my house is a two-story house. Theirs is a ranch. It's not a, it's not an equivalent. And to me, it was, as I said, woke up my entire family, and it was a scary moment, because I was yelling through the door, and they weren't responding until I said, I'm going to call the police, and if you come in, something bad's going to happen. So, I, at that point, the police showed up, and I went to my son's room, and I could hear her inside the car screaming, inside the police car screaming. So, it was just a, it was an unnerving situation for me.
Sounds like it. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
My name is Eric Stewart. I reside at 8,000 Hannah Point Place. I live a block away from all this, you know, and I've watched, since 2022, this house have a ton of foot traffic, and a lot of different incidents. People coming and going through all hours of the day, and extreme, extreme traffic congestion. We often refer to 6010, South Eighty First, as the drug house. Since my daughter was nine, she sat from her room with binoculars and watched everything that goes on at that house. You know, when the fire, you know, fire department shows up, when the police shows up, she's always reporting back to what's going on. We only let her go to Lincoln Christian using a buddy system, and I taught her to be more aware of the people in that area. My wife no longer feels safe going for her daily walks in the neighborhood, and she now carries a stun gun. I don't think any of you probably carry a stun gun when you go for your neighborhood walks. I've watched people park in front of my house under the trees where it's dark to either pick someone up or have a two-minute interaction with someone from 6010 house. I've caught on-video accessory to car theft. Second, in my cul-de-sac, we've also had a burglary in the area. I've requested the information from LFR and LPD for all calls within a thousand-foot area, including 6010, and received nothing back. The people that live and visit at 6010 project an uneasiness into the neighborhood. They have no oversight or accountability to stay sober. I've seen people on our cameras and videos who appear to be scoping out houses in the cul-de-sac. These people do not seem to be out walking for their health. They aren't dressed for, you know, for walking or exercise. They're not from the neighborhood, and they're smoking cigarettes. These kind of happenings are likely going to increase and/or get worse if this amendment is passed. Double the occupancy, double the crime. Now, as for the living conditions, you take a 2,400-square-foot house, remove approximately 120 feet of square foot for bathrooms, divide that up between eight people, and that includes the stairs, the commons area, the kitchen, and a sleeping area. And you're left with a 12-by-15 room, which is no different than a jail cell. Now, you want to let their significant others come and stay with them. How is that beneficial to anybody? The intentions behind the Oxford House are good, but in this scenario, it looks like they're exploiting the program. I've never received any letters that were sent out, because I do not live within a 200-foot affected area. However, my family is absolutely affected. The only way to get to my house is to turn at the intersection of 6010. Due to the parking congestion, there are times I cannot get to my house with my work trailer or my camper attached. And you want to increase that traffic. There's no, no traffic study has been done here. It is a school bus route. And if I would have received a letter, I would have been at the Planning Commission meeting to object. I worked long and hard to be able to afford a house in a safe neighborhood. Before the house at 6010 was purchased, there were none of these incidents. Now, it's out of control. I go to bed wondering if my vehicles, garage, or house will be broken into, or something worse will happen. I don't think you live with these concerns every night, and I shouldn't have to. Please make our neighborhood safe and vote against the amendment at hand. Thank you for your time.
Ready, thank you. Are there any questions from council?
Just, just to point out, too, I had no, no knowledge of what was going on with the houses immediately around there. I actually walked down a week ago to some of the houses that are around there and asked them, how, how do you feel about what's going on here? And then they just unloaded on me as far as, like, what they've been through. So, it's not a collaboration of anything. It's, it's, I live a block away. I just, I live at the top of the cul-de-sac. I can see everything that goes on. It's ridiculous. It's a party house, and that's all it is.
Thank you for your testimony.
My name's Jim Schaefer. I live at 8041 Hannah Point Place. City council members, I'm here speaking in opposition of the waiver for Oxford House on 6010 South Eighty First Street. When I was informed that the property is being used as a rehabilitation house, I initially had few concerns. My assumption would be there'd be two or three people in the house supervised for the recovery. We all know what happens when you assume, and it happened to me again. Since the beginning of the house's operation, the atmosphere in my neighborhood, I have lived since 2019, has changed. My neighbors don't spend any time outside very often. Kids aren't playing in front yards anymore, and the friendly air has dampened. I do not leave my house without wondering if there is be an incident. At my house, my family will be safe. While the house has been in operation, the congestion, which is the major sticking point here, at the, at the end of Hannah Point Place and Eighty First Street, has been unsafe. Due to the number of vehicles parking along the street, large truck, large cars and trucks often have difficulty navigating into tight intersections safely. The amount of traffic on Eighty First Street has increased along with the speeds. I believe this, the situation at the house is a main contributor. My neighbors have relayed stories of strained people in the neighborhood at late hours. Derelict vehicles and odd behaviors of visitors are, that are staying at the home are the norm at the end of the street. Getting stared down by strangers in your own neighborhood should never happen anywhere. And there are also been an increase in crime in the area. And yes, I believe the house at the end is the main contributor of this. A neighbor's had a car stolen, another had their ransacked, and several others have been harassed by strangers in the neighborhood. The safe place to watch our kids grow up is no longer safe. Imagine my surprise when I received the information, the notification of what's really going on at 6010 South Eighty First Street. The house consistently operates with eight or 10 occupants in violation of the municipal code, not counting guests or visitors that are there. This explains all the vehicles in the area. It also explains the new people that are in the area that seem to linger for a couple days, then leave, and then come back. I was also informed that there's also, there've been 18 police calls and several fire and ambulance, ambulance calls at this location. This does not calm my concerns about the safety of my neighborhood or my family. This cannot be normal for any normal rehabilitation facility, let alone a collaborative living facility. Obviously, there's no supervision or accountability at this house. Is there any enforcement of sobriety? Who knows? The current residents and their guests are allowed to do what they will with no consequences, and my neighborhood pays the penalty. With such high volume of police and emergency calls, this situation has deteriorated to a neighborhood hazard instead of a rehabilitation facility. In Oxford House's request, fax and request section, July 19th report, they stated that Oxford House are homes for persons recovering from alcoholism and/or drug addiction who no longer use alcohol and drugs. And those, and the house provides an opportunity for recovering alcoholics and addicts to maintain their sobriety in a supportive living environment that is not required for provision of any services or treatments. It also says there is no staff, paid or otherwise, living in the house or overseeing the house. No treatment or professional services are provided at the premises. My neighborhood has seen the results of this neighbor, this model, and while it might be successful in other places, it is a failure in this instance. Oxford House is applied for occupancy according to its lot size and not the actual living space in the house. This seems skewed. Why the lot size instead of the house? It looks like Oxford House is gaming a system and trying to profit off people in a difficult situation, to me. The municipal code states one person for every 1,500 square foot. The house, the living space, is just over 2,300 square foot with a 7,200-foot square lot. Using basic math, four people seems reasonable, while eight seems disastrous, especially for my neighborhood. Initially, this house is authorized to have four people, but is operated with eight or nine continually for at least the last two years, in clear violation of the code. Now, they're asking for permission for eight people to reside in the house, and because they got caught. Is the council really going to reward them because they got caught in, for violating the code? Can I violate the code and then come and ask for forgiveness afterwards? Can I do an addition to my house? And then, years later, ask, saying, oops, sorry, and then all's forgiven, and let it get swept under the rug? No. I'm asking the council to enforce the code and keep them in compliance, and then make sure they are compliant with the code. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from council for the testifier? Ready, thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name is Courtney Tease, and I live at 6020 South Eighty First, right next door to the house in question. We have lived in our home for 25 years. Both my husband and I have worked very hard to be able to afford building a home in South Lincoln. We wanted our children to grow up in a quiet, safe neighborhood and a quality school district. Both of our children have experienced a happy childhood with many neighborhood friends who we consider family. This is what I want for all of our neighbors and their families to experience as well. The City of Lincoln voted on an ordinance regarding the occupancy limits in single-family homes according to the lot size of the property. Regarding the home at 6010 South Eighty First Street, the ordinance states that four non-blood relatives, non-blood-related individuals may live at this property. There must have been issues elsewhere in the city to bring this to light, to the city. The number of individuals are in place for the safety of the residents as well as the neighboring homes. Laws and ordinance are in place to protect everyone. There have been several safety issues that I have witnessed over the past three years. There's been an increase in the number of vehicles associated with this house, which clogs up the street, making it difficult to see around corners when entering the neighborhood. There has been an increase in the number of vehicles trolling the neighborhood as well, looking for their girlfriends. These vehicles usually stand out, as they typically have loud exhaust and are usually wrecked and lacking license plates. I have witnessed women fighting in the street and yelling in the driveway at each other. There have been several ambulance calls to the residents and have witnessed several individuals leave on stretchers. There have been a couple of arrests, as well as at the home. One of these arrests was last year on Christmas Day. Our son and I have both been verbally threatened by one of the boyfriends in our own yard. Due to these issues, we did have a monitored security system installed a couple years ago. When the installer from Vivint arrived, we were talking, and he wanted to know what had prompted us to inquire about the system, as it appeared that we lived in a very nice neighborhood. When we mentioned that our next-door neighbor was now an Oxford House, his facial expressions changed to concern. He is from Florida and stated that he is very familiar with the homes in Florida, and his comment was, that is bad, very bad, and will end well for your neighborhood. This comment, of course, instilled even more fear in our eyes. Because of this house and the issues we have experienced due to the residents and their acquaintances, there is an aura of fear always in our minds, as you never know who will move in and what new issues may come about. as you never know who will move in and what new issues may come about. My husband and I love to travel, and when we are out of town, our twenty-two-year-old son sleeps with his gun by his bedside because he is fearful for who is coming in our neighborhood. Our daughter is scared to bring our two grandsons to our house for any extended length of time to the home that she grew up in. That's not okay. Our quiet, family-oriented neighborhood has not been the same since the Oxford House moved into the neighborhood. Before, you would see kids out playing and the parents out visiting and playing with the kids. Now, if you go down the street, you will not see kids out playing, let alone any neighbors out visiting, but you will see that almost every home now has a security system and cameras everywhere. After three years of dealing with this home, we had given up and decided to put our home from the past twenty-five years that we worked so hard to build up for sale. We had to rehome our dogs due to the torment they received from either the occupants or acquaintances next door, as well as the garbage that was thrown in them that they would eat and become sick. It was not fair for them to suffer, and was one of the most devastating things I have ever had to do to our beloved pets. We've been told by several realtors that it will be almost impossible to sell our home due to the Oxford House next door, and it was proven to us this past winter when we did put our house up for sale, and every offer was rescinded within forty-eight hours, the minute they heard of what was next door. It's very disheartening to see the neighborhood we love declining due to one home in the neighborhood. I beg of you to take into consideration the issues that have occurred due to the home living above the legal capacity and how this trend will continue if allowed to have the ordinance changed. I hope that you will uphold the current ordinance that is in place for four individuals and do not allow them to double the occupancy. I am all for rehabilitation. Increasing the number of people in the home obviously is not helping that situation. Thank you.
All righty, thank you. Are there any questions from council?
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Nancy Tucker. My husband and I live at eighty fifty-seven Hannah Point Place, and we have lived there for twenty-six years. We are the second house to the west across South eighty-first. We are opposed to any additional residents being allowed at sixty-ten South eighty-first. Since the house at that place has been allowed to operate as an Oxford House, there has been additional traffic and parked cars that have lined the streets on both sides of eighty-first Street, front and to the adjacent house, and then parked cars from these residents and their overnight guests have spilled out onto our street Hannah Point on both sides to the west. Several of these vehicles remain parked in several days without ever being moved. The additional traffic from these residents and the number of parked cars around the house at sixty-ten South eighty-first Street are a nuisance to the neighborhood, a safety risk for many people that are walking or biking, and to the children of our neighborhood. Allowing any additional residents, their vehicles, and the vehicles of their overnight guests will only further complicate any additional safety concerns for the residents and the children in our area. Thank you.
Any questions for the testifier?
My name is Rochelle McDonald. I'm at fifty-nine sixty South eighty-first, so I am a few houses down from the Oxford House. Um, I am actually reading a letter from a neighbor who is unable to attend. It is for Blake Ostrander at six thousand South eighty-first Street. Um, just as a quick side note, in twenty-twenty-two, when everything started, unfortunately, my house burned down. And so when a lot of this was happening, we were not living in our house. And it was actually just recently that I found out that it was all women in the house. With the cars that are parked in front of our house, I had no idea it was only women that lived in that house. Um, but this is the letter from our neighbor who is unable to attend tonight. The Hannah Point Oxford House has been in operation with more occupants than legally allowed for three years. For three years, they have disregarded all zoning laws and ordinances despite knowing that they exist. Extensive overnight and regulation must be present to ensure compliance of this house as they have proven that they do not follow these laws and ordinances. Zoning laws exist to maintain a consistent standard across neighborhoods. Granting this house a variance undermines the purpose of zoning. It gives these individuals preferential treatment over the neighbors who must comply with them. While the Fair Housing Act requires reasonable accommodation, courts have ruled that accommodations must not fundamentally alter the nature of zoning regulations or impose undue financial or administrative burdens in which this Oxford House does. Municipalities are allowed to enforce their codes without providing exceptions for substance abuse, recovering house, recovery housing. Federal law does not compel rewriting a zoning plan to accommodate group homes for these individuals. I would like to share a story with you. On or about November sixth, twenty-twenty-two, in the middle of the night, me and my spouse pulled into our driveway as return, as we returned from being out of town. We began to unload our belongings and our two sleepy children, ages two and four. While doing this, an unknown male with a black hoodie was lurking from behind one of the Oxford House residence's cars across the street. As we began to walk inside the garage, the male came out from behind the car, pulled the black hoodie over his head, and began pacing back and forth in the street, staring at us the entire time as if he was planning his next move and trying to intimidate us. So many thoughts ran through our heads. Is he going to wait for us to go inside and steal a vehicle? Is he waiting for us to turn our back so he can attack us? Is he going to attempt to kidnap our children? We quickly pulled the vehicle into the garage and closed the garage door, not even attempting to finish unloading the vehicle. We immediately turned our alarm system on, which we bought and installed only because of numerous individuals attempting to gain access to our house, claiming they thought they were at an Oxford House. We retrieved our firearms from our nightstands, which we have never before had to do, and we began monitoring our cameras and looking out our windows. The male was now in our driveway again, pacing back and forth with his hands in his hoodie and peering into our windows as if he was planning a home invasion. We called nine-one-one immediately and turned all the lights on in the house, praying that it would deter him. At that time, a car drove by. The man ran in front of the car as if to stop him. The car slowed down and swerved to drive around him. The man then chased after the car, and the car sped away. By the time the police arrived, this man was behind our house on school property, attempting to gain access to the backyard. He was apprehended and confirmed to be extremely under the influence of drugs. It was then discovered that the male had been living out of an Oxford House's residence's car with her permission. My children are frequently asking at night, what if someone breaks in? A fear that no child should have to worry about, especially in this type of neighborhood. We all, we have all worked so hard to move to this community to provide a safer environment for our children to grow up, only for the Oxford House to take away, take that away from us. And this is in reference to LPD case C two dash one zero 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 one nine. My children, along with the likely of all the other children in the neighborhood, are no longer allowed to be outside of our house unsupervised. They cannot play independently in the backyard. There are cigarette butts all over our yard and driveway. We have stocked up on Narcan, just praying that we never have to use it in our children. These residents cannot guarantee that they are and will continue to be alcohol and drug-free. They cannot guarantee that their guests, they're constantly there, do not have drugs on them and not under the influence. Their guests do not have to abide by the rules or regulations of the house. We have encountered more males under the influence come and go from this property than we have actual residents. There have been multiple occasions where we've had to rush our kids inside. Oops, sorry.
Yep, we're at time, but we, we have your written testimony.
Okay.
Appreciate it. Are there any questions for the testifier from council? All righty, thank you.
Thank you.
Just wanna have copies there. Um, my name's Bryce Tease. I live at sixty-twenty South eighty-first, directly next door to the, the residence. I just wanna kinda share my story of, of what South eighty-first is and was. Um, I wanna say first, my, when my wife spoke, that's the fourth time I've seen her cry in my life. We've been together for thirty years. That should mean something. Um, anyway, Beetham Summer Parties are annual dance put together by the children on their summer breaks, New Year's Eve gatherings, Halloween parties, or just random neighborhood barbecues. Life on South eighty-first was nurturing, happy, and most of all, safe. Within several months after Micah, who was the owner of the property, moved in, a lot of the neighbors, including Jeff Blymeister, who is currently the chief of police, saw the writing on the wall and moved across eighty-fourth Street. I now wish we did. In the beginning, Micah created this Oxford House. We really didn't know what was going on. We saw him moving out, and we were relieved to know his associates and the constant smell of marijuana would be gone. Soon after he moved out, a moving truck arrived with a bunch of single mattresses. We were very confused as to what was going on. Very quickly after that, there were six cars in very poor condition, none of which had exhaust on, or from Lincoln for that matter, parked in front of our houses and across sidewalks, with some very colorful ladies who made sure that we understood it was their house. We didn't go very long before there were people screaming at each other from the house, both inside and outside. That was when we made the decision to have a monitored security system with cameras installed on our property. We built our home more than twenty-five years ago and never once thought we would have to have a security system. By year two, the residents were getting very comfortable. It seemed they realized no one is holding them accountable. That's when men started frequenting the house, many of them for days on end. Most of these men also were not from Lincoln and were even more scary than the women. I even witnessed a child living there for a while. We have had women sneaking men into the house through our back and side yards. I witnessed a young lady wearing nothing but a tank top and pajama shorts, walking down the sidewalk back to the house in the dead of winter, when it couldn't have been more but ten degrees out. This last winter, one of the male friends staying at their house stood outside while my son was shoveling snow and told him repeatedly he had a small penis. Another male stood beside my wife's car in the street, shaking a can of spray paint, staring at her car for over ten minutes. It seems they know just how long they can do something and then disappear before we have time to contact the police. Year three, we started noticing more men visiting the house for days at a time, but they're, they're started parking their vehicle blocks away. Their vehicles stuck out like sore thumbs, but they were obviously trying to hide something. Maybe it was the fact that there were not only nine women, but at time, five men also staying in the home. We had adopted a couple of dogs in year three. Our dogs were repeatedly getting sick. Their vomit had cigarette butts in it. None of us in our house were near to smoke. That is when I put cameras on the side of my house to protect my dogs on the blind side. I did find it interesting while watching the planning commission meeting on YouTube, that LPD said they mitigated our cameras. At no time, LPD ever made contact with me. My cameras were, my cameras were taken down because I was giving up and I was gonna sell my house. Um, we listed our house in February, as my wife said earlier. Our first officer, our, our first offer was for asking price, less than twenty-four hours of it going live. Every offer we ever got on the house was rescinded within two days. We ultimately decided to, to forget it. This experience has ruined our, our neighborhood's freedom to be happy in our homes. Just the other day, my wife witnessed one of the ladies next door attempting to get her car out of the garage with another car parked directly behind her. They know they're being watched now, so they're parking in their garage in their driveway. She spent fifteen minutes going back and forth trying to get her car out of the garage. If these ladies are truly acting as a family, why didn't they just go inside and ask the other person to move their car? Or, or better yet, grab their keys and move their car. I'm honestly amazed at how far away from sixty-ten South eighty-first people have similar issues. I'm blown, I'm honestly blown away by the, the neighbors far away from my house. I thought this was a problem of strictly right around the house. Um, this has been a nightmare that I truly never imagined was a possibility. I hope keeping the home at four people as our current ordinance defines will alleviate the neighborhood issues as well as help them with their recovery. Once again, I, I wanna see people do better, get better, and succeed in life. That's, we're, we're not against that. Yeah, I sincerely appreciate all of you guys' time, and I, and I look for a brighter future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there, are there any questions for the testifier?
I have a question.
Councilman Bowers.
So, talking about the dogs, the dogs getting sick, and you, so you had video footage of like someone throwing cigarette butts at your dogs, but you didn't share that with law enforcement?
I don't have video footage. I simply put cameras over there. They weren't recording anything. There were cameras pointing at, if you looked at my property on Google Earth, you would see that there's a blind side to my property. That blind side's adjacent to their property.
Okay, that makes sense. How I was reading this, it made it seem like you had video footage of it. I'm like, why didn't you share that with law enforcement?
No, I was not recording, I was not recording the footage. It was simply a deterrent.
That makes sense. Thank you for clarifying that. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any, any other questions from council? Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi, Jason Hoffman, sixty-thirty South eighty-first Street. Uh, my wife wrote a letter to a previous, uh, city council member a couple of years ago. Um, I just wanted to put that in, in so we have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dean Cole. I live at twenty-six forty-four.
Give us one second while we restart the timer.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
My name is Dean Cole, and Cindy Rutan's here with me. We live at twenty-six forty-four Washington Street. We've lived in the community for over thirty-six years. I'm, I'm currently retired. My former background, I was director of EMS and trauma for twenty-seven years. Also, I worked in the Gage County Probation Office when I was in college, and then also currently Cindy and I are volunteering with the Gage County Court, working with the pre-trial diversion program. I live right next door to what we call the Michael House. Now, the Michael House is not, uh, I'm not familiar a lot with the Oxford House. They're in our near-south neighborhood, and I've heard a lot of the complaints about what's going on. But I need to speak about what, that collaborative living because me being here today is kinda like Groundhog Days, and it's, or it's like Yogi Berra said, you know, it's déjà vu all over again, because I've been here three years ago this month at a number of hearings and things, talking about the issues dealing with these collaborative living homes. Every member in that collaborative living home that's been next to where I live, there's been twenty-four of them that have gone through there. And every one of those that gone through there, I gave them my card, introduced myself, and welcomed them to the community. That house at one time had fourteen people living in it, and it was the animal house. When that house was first established, we were told by Michael, the gentleman that had the house, that it was going to be, hit, uh, children living in there going to college, lie. They went in there illegally too, lied about all of that. There was, we, again, we went from a neighborhood that this was a show home. It was on the near-south neighborhood. It was a home that had lovely people that had lived in it for over years, and then we had the Michael House. And then we went from this beautiful home with good people living in it to where we had to complain about the yard. We had to complain about parking. We had to complain about people that, again, were having sex in a vehicle across the street. We, like I said, I can just go, I can just relate to everything what these folks have said about this collaborative living home. Now, I believe in rehabilitation. I have a history of working with people. I have alcohol, drug stuff that's been in my family and close friends. I'm all for this. But one of the areas I see of my experience living here, because Cindy and I have helped move some people out. I've helped people in there that have asked for help because they couldn't get help from the Michael House or the parole board, which that's a whole nother story. They couldn't get help from the person that was supervising them. So we have helped them. So I've had this hands-on experience. What I've seen, one of the problems here is kind of the magic number. So we have gone from fourteen people to four. The only reason it dropped from fourteen people to four is because I went to the parole board and finally complained because we weren't getting any help from the parole officers to deal with the, with these people. We were told too by parole that if there's any issues, don't call the police, call us. Well, I did. Well, I sure found out soon that the, some, one of the people on the parole board was in cahoots with the owner of the house. And the people that, when they were asking me, who was, who's the people there that's complaining, like a fool, I told them. Interesting, those people moved out. So that's kinda, kinda the games that's happened. But what I'm telling you is, we went from fourteen people living in the house at one time, paying seven hundred fifty dollars a month, four in a bedroom, down to four. Okay? I have to admit, four is a lot better than fourteen. I have to admit that everything was going good here in that neighborhood, pretty much. We still have with the four, parking issues, people of their friends coming in and visiting who they could care less about you or anything, not respecting the neighborhood. It's usually their friends that come in and their friends that illegally park and all of that. That's the big issue because they don't warn them or tell them, nor is there good supervision. An example of the super, no supervision, just recently, was in the paper. The house manager of that house was just arrested as a sex, he was, he was a sex abuser, previously convicted, and he just got arrested two weeks ago for soliciting a fifteen-year-old who happened to be a police officer. So anyway, what's happened is, is that number one, a lot of the problems, you need to keep it at four. There is no way, when you're dealing with people who have this addictive behavior, that they can be managed or learn respect or learn about being in a neighborhood. And we have invited them to things. The second thing is, you gotta have good supervision, and they, you have to have that assured. And the other thing is, the owner of that house needs to be accountable. They stick their head in the sand. Michael has, he's, will never ever take my phone calls, and it's just like, it just goes away.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Uh, any questions for the testifier? All righty, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cole.
Hi, my name is Kelsey Repelogle, and I'm a person in long-term recovery. I've been clean since five fifteen of twenty-twenty-two, and I currently reside at Oxford House Hannah Point at ten, or at sixty-ten South eighty-first Street. Um, so what I have noticed since I've been living in the house is we provide a strong sense of community within our Oxford House. We provide a lot of support for our women. Um, we all go to meetings together. We had one member who, um, was going through a cancer struggle and a lot of health issues, and she asked, she sent me a message and asked me to speak on that. Um, and we provided her with a lot of support. Uh, the house is particularly has shown me how staying sober can be beautiful and having a nice house that we live in and while being self-supportive. Another one of our roommates, um, her name is Cassidy. She said, "It has given me a sober support while struggling, and I don't have to go home alone and sit and think in my head while other people's talk, uh, while I have other people to talk to and help me get through my thoughts. Accountability in helping me make it to meetings. We are good neighbors, and we are quiet, and a lot of us go to bed early. And if someone isn't peaceful and is disruptive to the house or to the neighbors, they're asked to move out immediately." As for this house particularly, it has shown me how staying sober can be awfully beautiful and having a nice house that we can live in and be self-supporting. So our Oxford House, I know when I particularly moved in, I didn't know how to write a check. I was not good at being held accountable. Um, I had never really been to a meeting. I didn't have a sponsor. I didn't work the steps. Um, without Oxford House to this day, I don't know if I would be sober, and I'm really glad that I particularly moved into one because these are all a lot of life skills that I've gained. So I was sober, but I was not in recovery until I got into an Oxford House. And it was the women in Oxford House that showed me how to live a life of long-term recovery, and for that, I'll be forever grateful.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council?
Yes.
Councilwoman Washington.
Ms. Kelsey, thank you for coming forward. I know it must take a lot of courage to speak up when you've Ms. Kelsey, thank you for coming forward. I know it must take a lot of courage to speak up when you've heard a lot of people speak in opposition. Um, I'm not trying to get into your business, but I'm trying to understand, having been told that the house rules have changed. I'm just trying to understand, how long have you been in this Oxford House?
Uh, at Oxford House Hannah Point, I've only been there for about three weeks, but I have been their outreach worker for about a year.
Okay, and as their outreach worker for this particular house?
For all of Lincoln, ma'am.
For all of Lincoln? Um, can you tell me what your interactions have been like with this house? And were you involved in helping them come to a different set of rules?
Um, yes. So I know that they have had some struggles in the past. But we, every house has their own autonomy, so they get to make their rules and decisions together. But my job, what I do is I am kind of like a teacher for the people that are in Oxford House. So I help them come to the best solutions for them and their house. So when a situation arises and they need me, they can call me. Um, and I will go over and sit in on their house meeting. Now I'm a part of the house, so I get to sit in on every house meeting. Um, but we come to an innies resolution that's best for the house, right? So it's not best for one individual, it's what's the best resolution for Oxford House Hannah Point.
Okay, um, and are you still, as a resident of this house, are you still the outreach worker for this house? Or do you have to stand aside and let someone else do that?
No, ma'am, I'm still their outreach worker and a resident.
Okay, um, what assurances um would the neighbors have that the house rules of no overnight guests, restraining the parking and taking care of the yard? How does, how does anyone have confidence that this will continue?
Um, well, I plan on continuing to live there. Um, so if anybody would like my business card, I would be more than happy. You can come knock on our door and I would give it to you. Um, other than that, we now have a policy of two cars in the garage, two cars in the driveway, and two on the street in front of our house. And that is it for our occupancy of cars, whether we get the, to have eight members. Um, we will only be allowed to have eight cars at our house. Um, and.
Eight or six?
Oh, sorry, six. Eight members, six cars, my apologies. Um, and then, um, as for overnight guests, that's just in our guidelines. And then, um, if anybody would like to look at our guidelines, I'd be more than happy to show them. Um, and we did hire a lawn company called Ruggers, if anybody would like to know.
Okay, I'm just gonna drill down just a smidge. Um, I think it was described as a house rule change for no overnight guests, and you're saying it's not really a house rule, it's a guideline?
Uh, that's just what we call our rules is guidelines.
All right, thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Councilman Bowers.
Uh, kinda to follow up on what Sandra was asking. And I think probably part of the frustration is there might not be like a point person where a neighbor's been able to like, you know, have someone to talk to, right? What I'm hearing you say is that with you being the outreach person for this, you would then be the point person for if neighbors wanted to share their concerns or their frustrations to, so that way it's kind of, I don't know, tracked? Or that they have one individual that they can go to?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, I don't have any business cards on my person right at this very moment. But I would be more than happy to, if anybody wanted to come knock on um our front door, I have a box of business cards. Or I could just, they could ask for my number here, and I'd be more than happy to give it to them.
Awesome. And then, uh, if they didn't find resolution with you, then maybe they could go one step higher to, I'm, I'm blanking on what, um.
Dan, Dan Hon.
Yeah, yeah. So that way that there's some sort of like point person where neighbors can share things. I mean, I imagine if they don't know who the point person is and they're talking to someone that may be new and they may not, the neighbors may not get a fulfilling response, but if they have you as a point person, and then if they have like an extra step above that, that might make folks feel a little like, uh, that there's some sort of recourse for some of the uh concerns and frustrations that neighbors have been having.
Yes, absolutely.
Councilwoman Duden.
Well, you, you say you've lived there for a year and a half?
Uh, no, I've been outreach worker for Lincoln for about a year, and I have only lived at Hannah Point for about three weeks.
Okay, uh, so in those three weeks, have you been harassed?
Um, I have not personally been harassed, no.
Okay, uh, thank you, that's all I have.
Alrighty, Councilman Shob.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Kelsey, thanks for coming forward. I, we've sat here for a few minutes and your neighbors have expressed some concerns about activities that go on in the building. I think Dan referred to in his testimony, there are four people living there now. Can you confirm that?
Yes, sir.
And has there always been four? What is the highest number of people that you, that you're aware of? You've only been there three weeks, I do understand.
Yes, so we did just have six.
And most of the neighbors have expressed concerns with six or fewer people living there. We're being asked to consider eight.
Yes.
Can you understand that their concerns, that if six were uncomfortable for the neighborhood, how increasing that number might make it worse?
Um.
And how would you address that?
I, I do understand a lot of their concerns, so I hope that it alleviates a little bit of um their concerns that uh, that I would be living there and that they could contact me anytime that they want because my work phone is pretty much glued to my body. I am on call twenty-four seven. Um, and then also for the car situation, I heard a lot about backed-up traffic. So we have come up with a system of two in the, two in the garage, two in the driveway, two um only parked right in front of our house. So we're only allotted two spots directly in front of our house. Any vehicles that are anywhere else, they do not belong to us. But right now, out of the four girls that live in our house, only two of them have cars right now.
Thank you. Those were my questions. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Washington.
Would you mind if I had just another crack? Um, thank you for explaining the six cars and how they would park. What about guests? I mean, not every guest is an overnight guest. So when guests come to the house, how are you explaining parking to them?
Uh, no guest cars are allowed at our house anymore. That has been added into our guidelines. Um, so if you want to have a guest over at our house, which right now we currently have not had hardly any guests at our house, um, you have to go get them and bring them.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yes, sir, or ma'am, sorry.
Any other questions from counsel? Seeing that there are no other questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, um, so my name is Masa Ponsvat, and I'm actually also a member at Hannah Point at sixty-ten South eighty-first. Um, speaking from my time of being there, I've only been there since March twenty-sixth of this year. Um, so a little bit longer than Kelsey. Um, I have uh eighteen months sober. I have a full-time job. I'm a shift manager at Parker Smokehouse, a barbecue place on eighty-fourth and O. Um, and what I've really enjoyed about this house so far is um the recovery and the support. So we have had people successfully live there and successfully move out, and then we be, we continue to be sisters with each other. Um, and I know that with, for me in like recovery, just having like a background or like a group to feel that you can kinda relate to and talk to and stuff is really important to me. And so that's uh some of the things that I've really enjoyed about this house. Um, hearing some of the neighbors speak um was pretty heartbreaking. I can only speak for about my time that I've lived there. Um, I was living there when the Spectrum um thing happened. Um, from what I know is, we decide as a group is that especially with this going on currently, we didn't want any like police action to happen. We didn't want to look like the house that's causing trouble. Um, from what we were told by Spectrum, that the cable runs into another neighbor's backyard and that there was some kinda like locking mechanism that protects, like a weatherproof type of box that possibly protects these cables. Um, and that it looks like that you would have to physically go in and possibly cut the cord. So I believe they made a report on that, but we did not take it any further with the police. Um, and going on with the uh gentleman knocking on the door. Um, we've made it really huge to our guests and stuff, like, hey, no one stays over too long. Um, cars need to be moved in twenty-four hours because they could get towed. Um, he was, a visitor came to a past member, and his car was towed after being there for about an hour or two. Um, we hit, did ask him to not bother the neighbors, and he took that upon himself. And we took further action of removing the girl that was associated with that gentleman. Um, so and further with like any relapses or anything, we've helped girls find a safe place to go, like detox and stuff. Um, and communicated with them, like getting their stuff out properly. Um, we don't just, um. And then when we do interview people, I know some of the questions that we ask is like to not be a sex offender or have any violent crimes. Or um to be like an arsonist and stuff, so both, all of us that move into the house don't have those types of like uh records on our list. Um, so it was really um interesting to hear the neighbors, since I have only heard stories when I was moving into the house in March. Um, all the girls that were living there at the time seemed scared. And I wasn't really sure or understood what, they're like, yeah, you know, neighbors hate us or. Um, and so, you know, we have never held like any type of unity event there. Um, but I know all the girls and even myself currently, um, I hold um, like other uh Oxford positions, like I'm a co-chair in fundraising. And uh our house does have like all the supplies that we use for fundraising events. Um, so that might be the misconstrued vision of like seeing traffic come and go. Um, there's many of us that hold more than just our house-level positions in Oxford. And so we are part of like fundraising. Um, we have an event coming up on the sixteen out of Lake. And I have a bunch of totes ready to take it to the lake and kinda set up this event. Um, so I don't know if that is kinda maybe some of the confusion with some of the traffic being seen at our house. Um, but since of all this going on, we have made the accommodations of the parking. So we, and we no longer let guests, you know, drive over. We pick them up now. Um, we haven't had any overnights since all this has been going on as of recent. Um, and like Kelsey said, we have hired a mowing company, but we do have our own lawnmower. We've, we've all pitched in and helped in on that. Um, and I am one of the members that don't have a car. Um, and I do use Lyft and Uber frequent. Um, and I also do take the bus, so I am walking around in the neighborhood.
Thank you. That, that is time. Appreciate it. Are there any questions from counsel? Councilwoman Washington.
I would just very much like to hear the end of your testimony. I know we got to time, but you were talking about you didn't have a car. So tell us again, how is it you're getting to work?
So I either take the bus um or call Lyft or Uber.
Do you have anything else you'd like to say?
Um, that I, I feel like I still see everybody in the neighborhood, you know, playing out front, walking around. Um, so to make it sound like everyone's scared and hiding in their houses with guns just seems very extreme to me, and it was heartbreaking to hear that. Thank you, thank you.
And Councilman Duden.
I got a couple of questions. Uh, what kind of a record do you have?
Um, I have a possession of cocaine, so I do have a felony. Um, I am currently on parole. Um, I have had no violation since.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Alrighty, thank you.
Thanks.
Uh, just real quick, an announcement, since we are at the two-hour mark, I'm gonna have two more testifiers speak. And then we will have a ten-minute recess and then resume the public hearing. So um I'll entertain the next testifier.
Hi, I'm uh Michael Glance. Um, I reside at twenty-thirty-five Jefferson, um, in another Oxford House. Um, I'm very much a part of uh Oxford House as a whole in Lincoln. Um, and it's, it's really unfortunate that there's so many um opposing decisions on this matter. Um, I know that the women that are residing in the house right now have currently tried to revamp the whole entire house because they wanna be a part of this community, and they don't want the community to dislike them in any type of way. Um, I know that, you know, a lot of us are alcoholics and addicts, you know, we come from a different life. And the reason why we're here is try to better ourselves. And what Oxford does is it gives us the tools to be able to live a regular life in a, in a normal society, in a normal neighborhood. And I know for me, it, it took me twenty-five years of my addiction to be able to figure it out. And within coming into Oxford, they gave me the tools to be able to thrive. And it's, it's a brotherhood and it's a sisterhood. You know, we, we care about one another. We care about our community. We care about our neighbors. I mean, one of, one of the main things they try to tell us and will not try to, they tell us is we need to be the nicest house on the block. And we need to treat our neighbors with respect because a lot of neighbors don't like people that move, that Oxford houses coming into their communities. They think that we're just a bunch of alcoholics and drunks that are just gonna come and rob and thief and steal from them and just ruin their community. And that's actually the complete opposite. Um, we get the example from all of them as well, you know, that, I mean, of course, they, they live a normal, healthy life. I mean, so we get a look at that and we could have decided to do the same for ourselves, and that's what we want. Um, and, you know, Kelsey spoke on a lot of things too about what the house has done to be able to alleviate um the issues with the whole parking, you know, on the streets. And um, so I can't really speak upon that because she already did. Um, but I know that we just wanna be a part, we just wanna be in the neighborhood. We wanna be able to succeed like everybody else, and so they put us into these good homes and nice neighborhoods so that we don't feel like we're coming out of jail or off the streets and getting put into a dump that's just going to make us not want to succeed or do something with ourselves. They wanna make us feel comfortable. And uh, I'm just, I'm grateful to be here to be able to speak upon some other Oxford houses and be a part of Oxford and just, I guess, thank you for having me up here. That's all I gotta say.
Thank you. Are there any questions from counsel? Councilman Duden.
I just wanna say, so far from the testimony I've heard, I don't think anybody disagrees with the mission of the Oxford House. In fact, uh, I feel the same way. I think you're entitled to uh some of those opportunities. I think the problems arise is when there's too many uh in a, in a residence. And uh, uh, it's not necessarily them causing the problems, but sometimes uh the visitors, uh, that sort of thing. And that, that they attract. And uh, I think the same thing happens probably at every Oxford House where you have that, you can't control uh the people that uh you knew from that previous life, that sort of thing, so. But I really appreciate you coming in and testifying.
Of course, thank you. And just a reminder, let's try to keep it to, to questions during the public hearing part. Are there any other questions from counsel? Alrighty, thank you.
I'm Jordan, great philatic, practicing recovery every day since March twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-one. Um, I can personally attest to the efficacy of Oxford House in helping people achieve long-term sobriety as they have helped me do such, and I've got to witness others do such along the way. Within the Oxford House, there are, we have our weekly meeting, much like this meeting here. Um, those meetings require us to have six officers' positions filled from chairperson to secretary. People handling the in-house books, people handling the out-of-house books, and people making sure we're doing our chores. So, in my eyes, the bare minimum that a house can efficiently run on without putting too much strain on somebody newly to the life of recovery would be six. Not to mention the financials of it, that just varies house to house. Um. It wasn't until I came to Oxford House that I even had the, you know, courage to stand up in a forum such as this and be able to speak in front of people. Um, let alone, you know, be able to jump from one thought to another. I honestly didn't plan on doing this tonight, but hearing everybody in opposition, uh, I just felt that I need to come up here and state the facts of bare minimum is six for one of these houses to efficiently operate. And honestly, for the recovery, the more people in these houses, the better for the house. I have heard everything these people in opposition have to say. And I would like to say that I'm sorry that's your experience with Oxford House, if that's what's happening. I honestly find some of what I've heard slightly wild, slightly outlandish, but that does come with the territory of addiction and recovery sometimes. It was not my experience that those things like that were happening at any house I had stayed at. And in the houses I've stayed at, in the three years I was at a house, I've since moved out. Uh, I think I personally was part of expelling at least fifteen members for returning to. of expelling at least fifteen members for returning to alcohol or drug use. Um, at any point, there was a rumor, a resident of a house I stayed in, or a house that I was also a chapter chair for a period of time. So anytime one of those rumors were brought to my attention for a house in my chapter, in the chapter I was serving or the house I resided in, uh, personally, you know, looked to dispel the allegation of someone using, or in the case that somebody wound up using, do the necessary part to make sure those houses remain in accordance with their charter. I believe wholeheartedly in the Oxford House model. I can attest to the efficacy of what they do in these Oxford Houses. And that's all I have to say.
All righty. Thank you. Are there any questions, Councilman Bowers?
Is your last name Evans?
Yes.
We went to high school together.
Oh. It was
Sorry to hear that.
It was Mike Bowers then. Um, I don't know if you're, yeah.
Yeah, I remember you.
Yeah, super proud of you. Thank you for coming out and sharing your story. And I'm really glad that you did come up, um, uh, to tell your, to tell your story. Incredibly proud of the progress that you've made.
Appreciate it.
You do Northeast Lincoln proud.
Thank you. You too, Councilman.
Any, any other questions?
Yes, my wife and I was going on.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And we will resume from recess at seven forty-eight. All righty, when we recessed, we were in the middle of uh, having public hearing for item five E. Is there anyone else from the public wishing to testify on this item? If so, please come forward now. All righty. Uh, before the applicant gives their rebuttal, is there any questions for city staff?
Yes, please.
All righty. Uh, Councilman Shob, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, if I might ask Mr. Carey to come up and help me understand a little bit about, more about our ordinance, about the planning commission recommendation, and uh, where we can go from here.
Good evening, David Carey, Director of the Planning Department, five 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 South Tenth Street.
Mr. Carey, as my friend, Mr. Cole said, deja vu all over again. I feel like I've been here before. Can you tell us how we, the city, got to this place and establishing our collaborative living ordinance, and a little bit about how the planning commission made their recommendation?
Okay. Um, so almost exactly two years ago, we, we collectively, the city, adopted the collaborative living ordinance in our zoning code. Um, that process was um, fairly lengthy one, involved a lot of neighborhood outreach and a lot of discussions about where to land on this topic. Um, so that section of the code identifies collaborative living, um, basically in the context of acknowledging that persons recovering from addiction and alcohol, uh, addiction and drug addiction are identified as a protected class under the Fair Housing Act. And then so giving that the context of that's what we're working with. Um, and then generally speaking, that there is a model out there that's used to provide a residence for those persons, um, in a supportive manner to help with recovery. So that's the big picture context of, of what that section of the code um, is meant to address. Um, it was put in the code because there was a knowledge that there were these houses and these homes in the community. Um, and so we provided basically an opportunity for those uses in those homes to um, fall under that ordinance as it was created. And so the, the, the kind of the, the short description of what's in the ordinance, uh, it includes um, basically, uh, in the residential zoning districts, um, it identifies, uh, as the zoning becomes more intense, such, and for example, going from R one, which is the lowest density, up to R eight, which is the highest density for residential, the allowance for more persons based on the lot size, which by the way, is a, is a typical way in zoning ordinances to provide some way to, that's a non-moving factor. In other words, it's hard to change the lot size. It's a little bit easier to change the size of a house or things like that. So um, as the density and the expectation for activity in a residential area increases, the allowance for the number of persons increases in a general sense under the way we wrote the ordinance. Um, there also is a cap in residential districts of no more than ten persons for collaborative living use. Um, there are other um, non-residential zoning districts where it is allowed and there are no limits in those districts. Um, if, if an act, if a, you know, uh, uh, an activity were to take place there, they could have more than ten. That's just kind of generally speaking. We also um, have a requirement that says for every two persons living there, allowed there under this ordinance, that um, a single parking spot is required. And we also under the ordinance, we uh, have included a thousand foot spacing, five hundred feet or a thousand foot spacing, depending on what the underlying zoning is, from another collaborative living use. So the idea of the spacing amongst themselves is part of the ordinance as well.
I'm sorry, spaced what was the footage between?
Five hundred or a thousand foot, depending on what the underlying zoning is. So that's what was adopted almost exactly two years ago. Um, this application for this location uh, came in asking for originally a reasonable accommodation under the definition of family. Um, as the process went forward and then ultimately what happened at the planning commission, uh, the applicant um, concurred during the hearing that they were comfortable with um, asking for a reasonable combination under collaborative living, uh, abiding by those rules, but asking for a reasonable accommodation up to eight people. This location um, under the collaborative living could uh, by conditional permit, get approved for four, under those rules that we just kind of quickly went through. So that the, what was approved, six to zero at planning commission, was that reasonable accommodation for collaborative living at this location for up to eight people. And so that is what now has been prop for you for your consideration.
Just a quick follow-up on that last section. So if the applicant had come forward, said, I want to use the collaborative living code for the city code, and I only want to have four residents, you could have approved it in your office and it would have never came before planning or city?
Correct.
So anyone who does that with just four or fewer as a collaborative living is an automatic? That's, that's not probably not a fair term.
There's, there's a, it, for um, conditional approval like that, they'd have to prove that they're meeting the conditions that we talked, the walk-through.
There'd be some documentation.
But at that, that density and that activity level, yes, that could be approved administratively.
I remember reading in the reports, that building and safety had inspected the building and said it could sustain, my words are a little weird, but eight was what they recommended as a number of people that facility could hold? Could you help me understand that a little better?
Yeah, I'm not sure if there was an actual number that was created based on that, but um,
How did they get to that?
It gets, um, part of the reason why the lot size is used um, for these types of calculations, is that if you go to the strict building code number for what is the minimum needed for inhabitable space per person, it's a very small number. Um, so a, a house this size actually, under that way of looking at it, could, could house many, many more people, uh, according to building code. But that's not what we're dealing with here.
Okay. So don't think like, don't think along those lines.
Right.
And the square footage of the lot, which property land doesn't move that much. So whatever the square footage of the lot is the number we're looking at in order to determine a reasonable number for a reasonable accommodation?
It, it
On the zoning of the
Yes, based on the zoning rules that we have adopted. Correct. And I think the, the one other piece of information, just to kind of provide hopefully some more explanation is that there still is the opportunity for this type of um, use to come forward with a reasonable accommodation request. So, and that's kind of how that request was asked at planning commission and was granted and recommended for approval to you for your consideration.
There was some conversation about number of units that exist in our city already and the spacing requirement. Is there a list or a registry that people are on and how do they apply and how do residents of our community find those numbers?
So um, just, I'm gonna just say, if, if you and your colleagues decided to approve this, this would be the first approved collaborative living use in the city of Lincoln. So starting with this one, that's when the spacing requirement would begin to be used for that location. Um, there are, we, we are confident there are other collaborative living houses in the, in the community and we have, have had, we've been having some of those conversations, but this would be the first one that would have a formal action taken out of, under that zoning designation.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Other questions from counsel? Councilman, Becky, yes.
Go ahead.
Councilman Duden?
Go ahead, Tom.
Um, I don't know if this is a question for Director Carey or Ms. Luttrell, um, but could
we, so we've spoken of the four residents that would be allowed conditionally by collaborative living today, the applicant seeking eight. To a lot of folks, very clearly, the, what is being asked of by the applicant then appears to be an increase. But, could we walk through, for example, the qualifiers that would allow a municipality to say, "Eight is not the number, four is the number"?
Be happy to have Abby Luttrell from the City Attorney's Office come up to help with this. I would start with just that, the way that you frame that question is, you know, we do have the ordinance in place now, so there is, the ordinance is something for the city to work from.
Yep.
That we didn't have prior to two years ago.
And I think that what we're hearing from neighborhood residents right now is, the ordinance says four, but now we're looking at allowing for an increase.
So, I think it's important to remember what's in front of you. And what's in front of you is not only a question of zoning or purely a question of land use. This is a question about whether the applicant is entitled to a reasonable accommodation under the Fair Housing Act. And, the city is bound by the Fair Housing Act. If an accommodation is legally required under the Fair Housing Act to enable the applicant to enjoy an equal opportunity to enjoy the dwelling, the law requires that an accommodation be made. You're all familiar with the analysis of what the applicant needs to show you, and that is that the accommodation is therapeutically or financially necessary. And so, that's where the number comes in. And I can't tell you where the line is. The question for you to consider is what evidence you've heard to support the request for eight.
So, it would be fair to say then that the collaborative living zoning ordinance that we're talking about, that people referring to, that gets us to a calculation for, is not the question that we're actually considering here, in so much as whether or not we are considering whether or not the applicant has shown that the request is necessary, the request is reasonable, it's therapeutic, there's no fundamental or substantial change in zoning, there's, there's these base questions from fair housing that need to be asked, and that's, that's the question of eight that we're getting to, not necessarily, is this an increase from four to eight?
Exactly.
And I just want to go back to the point that we're asking ourselves, these base, basic level questions of fair housing. And that can be confusing when we've implemented an ordinance that says this, but that we're actually dealing with questions that are beyond local zoning ordinance. So, I just wanted to walk through that a little bit, and I thank you for the clarification from both of you.
Chair, that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Duden?
At the Planning Commission meeting, did anybody testify in opposition?
I believe at the hearing itself, we didn't have anybody testifying in opposition. We received many letters in opposition, though, so that was part of the record, and that was known during the hearing.
And that was known by the chair?
Sure, yes.
Has anybody shown you any data that proves the therapeutic value of having four or eight people in residence? Have you, did you visit with a counselor or psychiatrist that is familiar with substance abuse and alcohol, and alcoholism recovery?
So, we have not had that type of testimony as part of this. We have had the applicant explain in their application, as well as in their testimony, that this is the model that they use, and they have, their history is what we used as part of that, you know, understanding of what the therapeutic value is of the type, running an Oxford House in particular.
But you weren't showing any numbers.
We were explained that that's how it works for them, and they've had success, and they do have numbers if you want to follow up with them in their, in their follow-up here. But, that's what was used as part of...
They haven't offered that, so...
No, I, no, they have put that in the record, that that's what they had said, and that's what they have stated. Chair?
Are there other questions from council? Councilwoman Washington?
Thank you, Chair. I think that my questions are for LPD.
And I know they're here.
Yeah. I see Officer Kopska. Captain?
Good evening, Ben Kopsa, Lincoln Police Department, 575 South 10th Street, Southeast Team Captain.
I'm trying to get at the therapeutic benefit, but also sort of help to alleviate, clear things up, so that we're looking at what we have, in fact. You heard a lot of testimony this evening, some of which was presented in writing and letters that came before the Planning Commission. You testified, I think, at the Planning Commission, that we're 18, you had 18 calls?
Correct. 18 calls between January 22nd of 20, sorry, January 1st of 2022, and then May 28th of 2025.
Okay, so almost the entire time that the House was...
Correct, yep. And I've updated that, there's one more call since the May 28th.
Okay. Were any arrests made in any of those 18 calls?
Yeah, so, when we originally ran that data, our crime analysis unit polled citation data, and that did miss one arrest that was made out of one of these calls for service, so I wanted to make that correction. That was on the call on December 25th of 2022. The officers had gone out there on an expelled resident refusing to leave the premises, and made contact with her, determined that she had a warrant, and then arrested her on that warrant, took her to Lancaster County Jail. So, that didn't show up on our citation data that was ran, but that was an arrest that stemmed from this address and from a call for service. However, the officers, since they handled it as a warrant, they didn't do any reports out of that call for service.
All right. Thank you for clarifying that. I know that you wear the blue uniform, and you're not with the fire department, but, you know, there have been some allegations that there have been calls to 911 for EMT. And do you know if any of those calls for service included, were for drug overdosing?
I don't know that. I do know that there's been six medical calls...
Medical calls, okay.
...at the address between February of '23 and December of '24. So, ran the data from January of '22 to current, and those were the calls for service for medical.
Does LPD keep the sex offender registry? Do you, I mean, do you, I know it's a state thing, but do you guys keep track of that?
We have access to it, and we access it and use it as part of our investigations, and we follow up on violations that we either come across or that are reported to us, but it's maintained by the county.
Okay. One of the residents who lives in the House presently said that their group, when they are looking at whether or not to allow a new resident, and they check to see if they're a sex offender, and they screen for that. I'm just curious, do you know what the, the distance is that a sex offender has to stay away from a school or a daycare?
So, yeah, the distance, I'd have to double-check on what it is from a school, but it would not be allowed because this, this property abuts the school to the east.
Right, backyard.
Correct.
Right up against Lincoln Christian, so, so no sex offender could reside in this House?
Correct. Because this would, this would be zero feet from a school.
Okay, all right. I'm just, I, this, you know, superintendent came forward, and I wanted to make sure that we at least had that on the record. I think that's, that is it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Duden?
Another thing that law enforcement is involved with is intelligence information from police reports. Yes, those don't involve cases. Suspicious activity that the officers come across themselves, or as important to them, that is often documented. Do you have a chance to look at any of the intelligence information concerning maybe the people that visit there?
I looked at the analysis from, based on the address, and there has been one intelligence report that's come as a result of those calls for service at the address. It's certainly possible that there's other intelligence reports that are linked to previous residents that have moved on, that would be difficult to tie back due to the way that our system works.
Help me a little bit, a little bit. Thank you.
Alrighty. Are there other questions from council?
Is there a chance that Director Elliott is still present in the back?
Let's see.
Nope. Okay. I just had a couple of questions around bus routes and with street and parking, no parking areas or whatever. You want to take a shot at it, Director? No, I'm joking, I won't.
I'm looking at any school buses.
Alrighty.
Yeah.
Well, seeing that Director Elliott is not here. Are there other questions from council? Okay, I have one quick one for Director Carey. And I know that it's getting late, and we are getting ready to move on to the next item. So, what I want to talk about is the reasonable accommodation part of this request, right? That when the city is evaluating a request for reasonable accommodation, there's eight factors that are typically considered, that are then referenced in the Planning Department's summary. And I wanted to ask about the eighth factor, about whether the requested reasonable accommodation would require a fundamental alteration to the zoning, building, fire, or safety codes of the city. It's on page four. And I was wondering if you could, it talks about the one-mile radius. Can you elaborate on whether or not there is a fundamental alteration to the city codes?
Sure. So, in, basically, really just basing it off what the staff report is saying, for that item, this is where like the spacing requirement really comes into play. And because there, there is no other collaborative living activity or house in that neighborhood that our finding for this report was that there is no basic alteration of the underlying zoning in the, in the area, based on that. And again, keep in mind that moving forward, if this were to be approved in this location, that if there were, there was another collaborative living activity proposed nearby, it would have to be 1,000 feet away from the house. And the way, our position is that, that, that being in our ordinance, is that kind of buffer to limit the, you know, the increasing impact on any particular location. So, that's why it's in the ordinance, and that's what we would do in this case.
Alrighty. That's all I had. Thank you, Director. Other questions from council? Councilman Schob?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Following up on that alteration question, this might be a question for legal. Our code says four now. Is requesting a reasonable accommodation to double that to eight a fundamental alteration?
I would say, well, maybe Ms. Luttrell would want to come up for this one too as well, but the reasonable accommodation, based on what we, what we talked about a little bit, a couple of minutes ago, which is, what's before you is that reasonable accommodation from the ordinance that is in place, so asking for the, for the eight. So, I guess I'm just passing it off to you at this point.
I can tell you that the fundamental, fundamental alteration of the zoning code, when courts have analyzed that aspect in cases that are published, it's generally, the request is a major change in use. For example, more of a commercial use in a residential district. In this case, the use continues to be residential. It is not a complete kind of change, categorical change in use.
I understand. Thank you, that's helpful, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Are there questions from council for staff? If not, the...
I have one of Luttrell.
Okay. Councilman Duden, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chair. When you say, geez, but, in your opinion, would you classify the Oxford House as kind of a motel, kind of a business?
I can tell you that collaborative living in our zoning code, which is the request before you, and what the applicant has asked for, is housed under our household living group, use group in the code. And so, our code would require, would recognize it as household living, or group living.
Has there been anyone asking for an accommodation since the ordinance?
In order to operate under the conditional collaborative living use, an accommodation request is not required. It's a conditional use. If you meet the conditions, you're not required to get further government approval from a governing body. It's done administratively.
Any other questions from council? If not, then the applicant is invited to make a brief rebuttal.
I will be brief, because I know it's a long evening. Thank you for the opportunity to present our case this evening. I'm not sure, it was until today that I fully realized the stigmatization that individuals who are undergoing, whoever are addicted to drugs and alcohol go through. When you move into a neighborhood and you're immediately labeled the drug house, it's kind of hard to overcome that, which explains a lot what's going on here this evening. On behalf of our client, respectfully request pursuant to federal law, pursuant to state law, a reasonable accommodation request to allow up to eight occupants to live in this particular house. Do you have any additional questions?
Are there any questions for the applicant? Councilwoman Washington?
I have a, I'm going to ask the question a second time, because I think that some of the, without overusing the word, not using it in exactly the same way, the accommodations that this House has made in the last couple of months, or maybe even just the last month, to limit their parking, to disallow overnight use, to make promises to take care of the yard, to keep it up. What are the assurances that that will continue? Can every new group of residents, every new, change the rules?
I can't speak, the answer is, it's, my understanding is, yes, they're democratically run, so each group can change those rules underneath the umbrella of Oxford House nationally, which he mentioned the three or four basic rules that they all must adhere to. That being said, relative to parking or mowing, that's no different than any other house or any other residence within the community, based upon who's living there at a particular time, what life circumstances they're going through. Oxford House has made a commitment to you here on the record, as well as to the Planning Commission, that they understand the concerns of the residents, that they are going to do everything that they could possibly can to make sure that those concerns are addressed. They're already doing so relative to parking and to mowing, and they have no desire greater than to be, simply be a good neighbor and to be allowed to be a part of this community.
Are there any other questions from council? Alrighty. Thank you. Madam Clerk, we can proceed.
We cannot, excuse me, we can now vote on these items. Item 5A is authorizing an application to the Nebraska Gaimin Parks Commission for Land and Water Conservation Fund grant for renovating and upgrading two ballfields at Jensen Park, introduced by Duden.
Salute.
Second?
Second by Beckyus. Second by Beckius. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Duden?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero. Item five B is accepting and approving the report of new impending claims against the city for July first through July fifteenth of 2025, introduced by Bowers.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Beckius. Discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero. Item five C is approving an agreement between the City of Lincoln on behalf of the Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department and the Nebraska Association of Local Health Directors to accept a two-year sub grant to the amount of one hundred and ninety-nine thousand to address issues associated with health equity concerns and social determinants of health through community health workers and community settings to screen, educate, and empower diverse community members to address a range of prevention and healthcare issues from July first, twenty twenty-five through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-seven, introduced by Bowers.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Beckius. Discussion? Seeing no discussion, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Bowers?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero. Item five D is comprehensive plan conformance two five zero zero three, application of the Lincoln Police Department to review as a conformance with the twenty fifty Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan for proposed amendment to the capital improvement program by adding the police property storage remodel for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five on the property generally located at six three five J Street, introduced by Bowers.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Beckius. Discussion? Seeing no discussion, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Beckius?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero. Item five E is miscellaneous two five zero zero seven, application of Oxford House Inc. and Oxford House Hannah Point to request a reasonable accommodation under the Fair Housing Act in chapter one point two eight of the Lincoln Municipal Code to the occupancy limits for collaborative living facilities established by section two seven point six two point zero five zero D. Applicants request an accommodation to allow up to eight persons to occupy the collaborative living facility at sixty ten South Eighty-first Street, introduced by Bowers.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Beckius. Discussion? Councilwoman Washington.
Thank you. When we took a break, I was determined that I was going to ask for a week delay because there's a lot of information here and I'm not really feeling uh, I'm just, there's a lot of information here. I'd like to process stuff a little bit more. But I, I think I'm, I think I can make a vote. So, I, I will say that this is not an easy decision. This is an this is incredibly difficult and thank you very much, Councilwoman Luttrell, for making sure we're focused on the Federal Housing Act. I appreciate that. So, and Director Carey, thank you for all the information. I won't ask you to be the LTU Director again. Alright.
So, to clarify that-
I'm not going to ask for a week delay, so I just thought I'd say that out loud.
Is there other, Councilman Beckius, you are recognized.
Uh, thank you, Chair Weber, I appreciate it. I want to first start by thanking everyone who came down and testified on this issue on either side. I know that coming down and speaking in a public forum can sometimes be challenging, uh, but everyone did a great job and I really appreciate you coming down and letting your, your thoughts be known on this particular issue. It's really easy to understand that, that people don't want nuisances in their neighborhood and it has, you know, it's, it's plainly clear that implementation of drug and alcohol rehabilitation services in residential areas across the nation, because this isn't just happening in Lincoln, Nebraska, this is happening across the nation, um, has caused a lot of heartburn, uh, when things are not managed well. And that's extremely frustrating to me, uh, because I've heard repeatedly over the last few years that residents are concerned, uh, very concerned about, uh, these services in their neighborhoods, especially if there are concerns regarding the number of occupants in a house, or whether or not there is management of that house on the premise twenty-four seven, or, or issues related to that. But at the end of the day, the problem that I have as a, a local politician, if you will, is that there's not much that I can really do to restrict these uses. Case law has been clear over the years and courts have repeatedly determined that the Fair Housing Act protects individuals in recovery. State corrections, uh, services across the nation, uh, repeatedly use these models, including Nebraska. And that's where you see them. And local jurisdictions, um, simply don't have the control on these issues that I think a lot of us in the room wish that we would have. I do feel like my hands are tied here in terms of approving, uh, this use because of, uh, federal law and interpretation of federal law over the years. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Beckius. Councilman Duden.
Well, I, I'm kind of disappointed a little bit. I think there's been some strong opposition to this, uh, combination request. I don't think the residents have a problem with the ordinance that we crafted two years ago. And I think, uh, according to the traffic problems that the neighbors have encountered, that we, as a city, should do a better job of managing some of those problems by not allowing this type of a facility to dictate other individuals' living conditions. And I think what we're talking about, we're talking, you talk about the Fair Housing Act and I, I'm sorry, I, I, I have a problem with that definition of disability because I've seen people that are disabled as a result of an illness, uh, or an injury, and, and some of the things that they're involved with when it comes to recovery. When it comes to substance abuse and alcoholism, that's, that's kind of self-inflicted. And they're not disabled while they're using, but they are when they're in recovery. And, and that seems to be wrong. Uh, I, I think everybody has a right to the pursuit of happiness and if that involves moving into a, a bigger house because your family's growing, and after you buy that house, uh, an Oxford House pops up. And believe me, I, you know, when I was on the police department, I was heavily involved in DWI enforcement. I used to teach that class in the academy, did in-service training, been to a lot of different schools. I've got friends that are alcoholics. And, uh, they are in recovery every day, but they can live, uh, just like anybody else. They have the full use of their arms, legs, and what have you. Sometimes I think these houses just attract, uh, the visitors may be the problem, not so much the people living there. But, so you have to kind of consider all these things. To me, this is like a mini sorority or fraternity popping up in the middle of the neighborhood. You have all this addition of cars and foot traffic and people walking through yards in the middle of the night and strange people walking around, uh, with hoodies on. They pull the hoodies up to hide their face. And so when you see this kind of activity, uh, there, there are some alarm bells that go off. And I know as a law enforcement officer, the law enforcement officer is even more suspicious from that activity because of their experience in, in building cases with, uh, either substance abuse individuals or, uh, partaking in DWI enforcement. And, uh, I am glad the people that have been involved in recovery find, find that, uh, their old ways were not the, the best things to do in life. I, I, I can really appreciate, uh, those comments and those statements and I think everybody in the room is, is happy for you when it comes right down to it. But sometimes you, you can't control some of those other things that might happen that are associated with, with your, with your house and your living facility. And I think all that, uh, I would like to see is I'd just like to see that controlled to a certain extent. And yeah, allow the four, uh, people, uh, to, uh, exist in that house. I didn't hear any testimony from any experts that said why there had to be eight people for, uh, successful, uh, therapeutic recovery of anybody involved in substance abuse or alcoholism. I just, I didn't hear that. I didn't see any numbers. Uh, they talked about success, uh, and I'm, I'm glad for that. They didn't show us any data whatsoever. No numbers, no nothing. They couldn't really tell, uh, the one individual that supposedly supervised this house, he, he couldn't answer a lot of questions about the activity that's taking place. And he's supposed to be the supervisor. So I don't, I don't quite understand, um, why, why we allow this in a neighborhood and why we don't control it to a certain extent. And I, and I think that is reasonable. I think that's a reasonable expectation for the people that have children using the sidewalks, walking down, up and down the street, walking to school, riding their bikes, uh, that sort of thing in a neighborhood. And unfortunately, when that stuff has to stop, uh, that is unfortunate for those people that, uh, have seen some of the problems that have taken place associated with this house. Eighteen calls for service? I haven't seen that in my neighborhood. I don't think I've seen eighteen police cars drive by my house, uh, in the, the ten years I've lived there. So, I, I, I think that's excessive. Uh, and then when you, you add that the ambulance showing up, uh, as well, it attracts attention to that location. What's going on there? What's wrong? And, uh, I think that's why, uh, I'm going to vote, uh, no on this. And I would urge my colleagues to kind of reexamine their rationale as well. I think public safety, uh, has spoken here tonight. There's a need to tighten things up and, and this residence have been in violation since the inception of the, the, uh, the ordinance. I, I know that for a fact because I went there and I knocked on the door. I asked how many people were living there. They said there was eight and they could have nine. That's what I was told. I was not invited in. So that's kind of contrary to what I've, I've heard tonight. So, I, I didn't see that really, you know, reaching effect, so to speak. And I was dressed just like I am tonight. I have a sport coat on, I had my city council button on, I gave my business card. And, uh, city councilmen can't make arrests. So I don't know what the fear would be in talking to a city council person. I just kind of, I, I kind of disagreed with that as well. So, in fact, I would invite that. I was there just trying to learn. You know, what, what's going on there? What kind of problems are, are they incurring? You know, if I would have had a resident say that, yeah, we've been having trouble with some of our residents' friends and old pals from days gone by, and they no longer want to associate with them. Well, I can understand how that might happen, but, uh, I didn't hear that. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman Duden. Councilman Bowers.
I want to thank everyone who has came out to tell their story, um, and to get their comments heard. And I specifically want to thank Jordan directly for having the courage to share your story. Testifying publicly about recovery, especially in front of elected officials, cameras, and neighbors, takes extraordinary bravery. And it's also a reminder that behind zoning codes and legal framework are real people, people we know and people who grew up here. It's also a reminder that individuals in recovery from substance use disorders, which federal law recognizes as a disability, are already members of our community. They're not coming in from the outside. They live here in Lincoln. And if they live here in Lincoln and if they're going to live here, the question is, do we support housing options that help people succeed? Or are we going to push people towards instability and isolation? Oxford House is not an experiment. It's a pure-led model that's been studied, featured by the U.S. Surgeon General, and supported by decades of national research. It's listed as an evidence-based model with SAMSA, which is a pretty high bar to reach, and I know from my background as a clinical social worker and a mental health therapist. These homes do help people, they reduce relapse, and they create structure, stability, and dignity. If folks weren't living at an Oxford House, they would still be living in our neighborhoods, still living in our cities, just with a higher chance of relapse and a lower chance of recovery. Talked a little about, uh, statistics and data, and directly from SAMSA's website, Oxford Houses are an example of a level-one recovery residence. A two-year follow-up of individuals discharging from this treatment into an Oxford House versus those who discharge as standard continuing care revealed that Oxford House residents has significantly lower substance use rates from thirty-one point three percent to sixty-four point eight percent. Significantly higher monthly income and significantly lower incarceration rates. I also want to be clear-eyed about the legal reality. Courts across the country, including here in Nebraska, have made it clear, cities cannot deny reasonable accommodation requests without violating the Fair Housing Act. People with disabilities, including those in recovery, have a legal right to live in residential neighborhoods. And if we don't like that definition, then we need to lobby our federal delegation to change that. We cannot change federal law or violate federal law just because we don't like it. Lincoln has lost cases like this before and so have other cities in our state. I want to specifically, uh, talk about two of them. With the DSN versus the City of Lincoln back in two thousand and seven, where the United Cities District Court said, "Evidence showing heaps of red tape garnished with bureaucratic indifference and inconsistent and irrelevant posturing by city officials, elected and otherwise, does not make the City of Lincoln guilty of consciously intending to discriminate against people with developmental disabilities. But that evidence and more does prove that Lincoln denied a group home provider and its developmentally disabled clients reasonable accommodations to land use." As a result, taxpayers will have to pay the provider a lot of money for the city's violation of federal law. Sadly, by merely acting responsibly, Lincoln could have easily avoided that expensive outcome. Another court case was New Hope Fellowship Inc. with the City of Omaha in two thousand and five. The City of Omaha unlawfully failed to make a reasonable accommodation granting a specific, special use permit for residential treatment centers serving sixteen to twenty women in recovery. The group home failed to meet the half-mile spacing requirement because another group home was directly across the street. The applicant requested a reasonable accommodation to the spacing requirement. The city argued that this was a fundamental alteration, alteration of the zoning regulation because it was a ninety-four percent reduction in the spacing requirement. The court rejected the city's argument finding no fundamental alteration, which resulted in hundreds of thousands of taxpayer dollars. Fighting this kind of, uh, voting against this kind of request isn't just likely to fail, it's virtually guaranteed to cost taxpayers dollars and money. And if we vote no without a strong legal basis, it's easy to make a political vote and to just say, I'm going to vote against it and take a political win, but it's irresponsible with public dollars. And for a council that talks often about fiscal stewardship, we need to recognize when opposition is not just unlawful, but is also financially reckless. The request has been scaled back to eight residents. It's limited to the specific house and operator, and there are no code violations. And for those reasons, I will be voting yes.
Are there any other council members that wish to be recognized? Then I would just briefly add that, um, similar to what Councilwoman Beckius and Councilwoman Bowers stated, it, it's unlawful under the Fair Housing Act to discriminate in the sale or rental or to otherwise make unavailable or deny a dwelling to a buyer or a renter because of their disability. And whether we agree with it or not, it is well-established by federal court that individuals recovering from drug or alcohol addiction are disabled under the Fair Housing Act, which also guarantees that disabled individuals are afforded the equal opportunity to live in not just some residences in the community, but rather the residents of their choice. Our code expressly provides for accommodations as required by federal law. And since there is no other operating collaborative living facility within a one-mile radius, the planning department determined in its staff report that this accommodation did not substantially or fundamentally alter the city's zoning regulations as well as building, fire, and safety codes. And that, with the other seven factors, and determining if it was a reasonable accommodation, was determined to be a reasonable accommodation. And out of a deep sense of obligation, uh, to the rule of law, I will also be voting to support, uh, this agenda item. With that, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Duden?
No.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Motion carrying five-one. That concludes our Section Five Public Hearing Resolutions. We shall move on to Section Six Public Hearing Ordances, Second Reading and Related Resolutions. I'll call Item Six-A, Change of Zone Zero Seven Zero One Eight-B.
Luke Scott Lockard with Hampton Enterprises, thirty-four hundred Plantation, sorry.
I need to read the item in first. Give me just a brief moment. Application of Hampton Enterprises, Inc. to amend the Glen Oaks Plaza Plan Unit Development to increase the commercial floor area by seventy-eight thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven square feet for a total of two hundred and fifty-eight thousand square feet, and to add one hundred dwelling units on the property generally located at South Eighty-Fourth Street and Glen Oaks Drive.
Thank you. Scott Lockard, Hampton Enterprises, thirty-four hundred Plantation Drive, here on behalf of our application to amend our PUD at Glen Oaks. Currently, the PUD is for residential on the north half, and we are currently finishing construction on our last building in Glen Oaks right now. So this amendment to the PUD will allow us to put commercial property throughout the rest of this land in this development. So we have met with the Planning Commission. They voted unanimously to support this amendment to the PUD. We have sent letters out to the neighborhood to inform them of our intent to redevelop this area. There was a few comments, questions that came back, partially related to screening. We were anticipating leaving the trees that are along the north edge of the property line to keep the screening that's in place, but additionally add more street trees along the street that we're putting in, as well as on the northwest corner of this development. There are less trees in that area, so we intend to put more trees to help with the screening. Any questions?
Thank you for your patience, by the way, for this meeting. Really, really do. Are there any questions from council? Councilman Schob?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks for coming forward. I'm reading the summaries, and the thing that I'm fixated on is to add a hundred dwelling units on the property, more housing in Lincoln.
So the request to change the PUD is to put commercial property in. One of the requests of the Planning Commission was to leave in residential if the market dictates. So essentially, the west end of the property made the most sense to us to allow for flexibility to put potentially residential there.
This is a good thing. Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilwoman Washington?
Just two comments. One, thank you for clarifying where the residential was going to go, because I was trying to imagine commercial with residential on top. So thank you for explaining that. And then thank you for more trees.
No problem.
Good thing.
Councilman Beckius?
I just want to thank you, Scott, and Hampton, for your continued investment in Lincoln Market. The Glen Oaks Plaza development has been a nice addition to East Lincoln, and looking forward to seeing it finished out. But thank you to you and your company for your continued investment in our city. Appreciate it very much. Thank you, Chair.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you for your patience.
Madam Clerk, we may proceed.
Is there anyone else?
Or, sorry, anyone else from the public wishing to testify on this item? Now we may proceed.
Move on to Section Seven, our ordinances, third reading and related resolutions. I'll call Item Seven-A, Amending the Pay Schedule for a Certain Employee Group by Adjusting the Schedules of Annually, Monthly, Biweekly, and Early Pay Range Equivalents for Employees of the City of Lincoln Whose Classifications Are Assigned to Pay Ranges Prefixed by N. Introduced by Beckius.
So moved.
Second?
Second by Washington. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Schob?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Motion carried six-zero. Item Seven-B is amending the pay schedule for a certain employee group by adjusting the schedules of annually, monthly, biweekly, and hourly pay range equivalents for employees of the City of Lincoln, whose classifications are assigned pay ranges prefixed by N. Introduced by Beckius.
So moved.
Second?
Second by Washington. Discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Duden?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Motion carried six-zero. Item Seven-C is amending the pay schedule for a certain employee group by adjusting the schedules of annual, monthly, biweekly, and hourly pay range equivalents for employees of the City of Lincoln, whose classifications are assigned to pay ranges prefixed by X. Introduced by Beckius.
So moved.
Second?
Second by Washington. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Motion carried six-zero. Item Seventy is amending the pay schedule for a certain employee group by adjusting the schedules of annually, monthly, biweekly, and hourly pay range equivalents for employees of the City of Lincoln, whose classifications are assigned to pay ranges prefixed by E. Introduced by Beckius.
So moved.
Second?
Seconded by Washington. Discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Bowers?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Motion carried six-zero. Item Seven-E is amending the pay schedule for certain employee groups by adjusting the schedules of the annually, monthly, biweekly, and hourly pay range equivalents for employees of the City of Lincoln, whose classifications are assigned to pay ranges prefixed by W. Introduced by Beckius.
So moved.
Second?
Seconded by Washington. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Duden?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Motion carried six-zero. Item Seven-F is amending the pay schedule for a certain employee group by adjusting the schedules of annually, monthly, biweekly, and hourly pay range equivalents for employees of the City of Lincoln, whose classifications are assigned to pay ranges prefixed by DSS. Introduced by Beckius.
So moved.
Second?
Seconded by Washington. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Bowers?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Motion carried six-zero. Item Seven-G is amending the pay schedule for a certain employee group by adjusting the schedules of annually, monthly, biweekly, and hourly pay range equivalents for employees of the City of Lincoln, whose classifications are assigned to the pay ranges prefixed by B. Introduced by Beckius.
So moved.
Second?
Seconded by Washington. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Beckius?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Motion carried six-zero. Item Seven-H is amending the pay schedule for a certain employee group by adjusting the schedules of annually, monthly, biweekly, and hourly pay range equivalents for employees of the City of Lincoln, whose classifications are assigned to pay ranges prefixed by A. Introduced by Beckius.
So moved.
Second?
Seconded by Washington. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Duden?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Motion carried six-zero. Item Seven-I is amending the pay schedule for a certain employee group by adjusting the schedules of annually, monthly, biweekly, and hourly pay range equivalents for employees of the City of Lincoln, whose classifications are assigned to pay ranges prefixed by C. Introduced by Beckius.
So moved.
Second?
Seconded by Washington. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Schob?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Motion carried six-zero. Item Seven-K is an ordinance authorizing and providing for the issue and sale or delivery of municipal improvement bonds in the amount not to exceed twenty-five million for the purpose of acquiring, equipping, renovating, and reusing an existing building for a new central library. Introduced by Beckius.
So moved.
Second?
Seconded by Washington. Discussion? Councilman Beckius?
I'm just going to talk. We have the next three all relating to the downtown, or excuse me, the central library, but I'll just speak now. When I joined the Library Board of Trustees in 2009, I didn't understand at the time why the central library project wasn't progressing on the CIP plan. And I asked then-Director Leach, why isn't this progressing forward? And the reason for it was is that there was no funding source. There is a large monumental discussion being had in the community even at that time as to whether a central library made sense, and if there was the political will to move forward on a central library replacement. That was sixteen years ago. I didn't know when this was going to happen or if it was going to happen. I'm excited to sit here today and say, Director Weber, I think this is going to happen. And I really look forward to reimagining what library service looks like in the Lincoln community with the central library now being a beacon of what that looks like. So I'm eager to support this and just want to thank everyone in the community that participated over these last few months to determine whether or not this central library project in this location made sense for the city at this price. And what I have heard over the last couple of months is a resounding yes. So I'm eager to support it and look forward to, I think, the addition of, or the opening of a central library in 2028. Thank you, Chair.
You. Any other? Councilwoman Washington?
Without repeating everything that Councilman Beckius has said, I wanted to stand up strongly in support of this. I think this conversation has been happening for over twenty years about replacing the central library, and it's really good to be at this place. We've heard from a number of residents how excited they are about this. And one group of residents, who don't speak for the entire community, but they speak loudly, and there were many of them who came forward and really urged the City of Lincoln to think about how this new central library could be the most sustainable. When Pat Leach was our director, she said, "Books, that libraries are more than books." And Director Weber, you came forward last week and said, "Libraries are about people." And I would say that libraries are more about, more than books. They're more than people. Libraries talk to the future of our community. They instill a sense of hope and pride, and they give us a place of learning and imagination and creativity and all of those wonderful things. And with that, as a conservationist, I can't do anything but really express the hope that when this library is built, that not only is it sustainable financially, it is sustainable environmentally, and that it leads the day. And that's an intentional play on words. The City of Lincoln has always led in climate action, and I want us to continue to lead in climate action and do the most amazing things that we can't yet imagine, but to make this building environmentally friendly and conscientious so that not only do we have the best new library that we could ever imagine, we also have the most eco-friendly library we could ever imagine. So with that, you have all of my support.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Duden?
I'll just bring up a fact because I have all my town halls at Charles Gere Library. So I've been using that location for town hall meetings for, since August of 2023. But I also see the value in books and people. In fact, I had Brian Sack from Lincoln Literacy as my guest speaker at my last town hall meeting. To see that their mission involving education with people that are new to this country, that sort of thing continues in a matter. Lincoln should be proud of its record as it pertains to helping immigrants that have come here and learned and found job skills and are productive in the community, that sort of thing. As soon as I heard about the possibility of this location being available, I was pretty excited about it. At the same time, I also was aware that the Centrum, in my opinion, was the ugliest building ever built downtown Lincoln. It didn't have a window in it. People would drive into town, wonder what the heck it was and what have you. They have added a few windows on the first floor, and this renovation is going to add a lot more. So I think that's kind of exciting. I'm a little bit concerned about the costs. I'm not totally sold on the Green New Deal. I think we need to definitely use efficient heating and electrical equipment in the building, that sort of thing. Make sure it's going to be a building that's going to be there for a long time. I work downtown Lincoln. I'm very familiar with the Bennett Martin Library and how that building has deteriorated to a point where it would be impossible to renovate that any less than what we're spending on the old Centrum building. So I see this as a plus, and I think it will be a building that everybody can be proud of. Everybody's going to be able to drive into town, know exactly what it is. And I think it will be a great meeting place for people at the same time. So it's going to be very cautious about disabilities and what have you at the same time so that everybody could use the library. So I'm kind of looking forward to seeing how this building changes in the near future here. So thank you, Chair.
Any other discussion? Seeing no further discussion, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Motion carried six-zero. Item Seven-L is approving the real estate purchase and sale agreement between Southeast Community College Area and the City of Lincoln on behalf of Lincoln City Libraries for the purchase of property generally located at eleven-eleven O Street, Lincoln Lancaster County, Nebraska, for new downtown central library. Introduced by Beckius.
So moved.
Second?
Seconded by Washington. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Bowers?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Motion carried six-zero. Item Seven-M is amending the capital improvement program, CIP, for the downtown central library project to decrease the funding amount and to amend the funding source. Introduced by Beckius.
So moved.
Second?
Seconded by Washington. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Beckius?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Weber? Weber?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0.
So that's why there's here.
There's be some library people here.
Yeah. Okay, order, Madam Clerk, please proceed.
That concludes Section 7 of our agenda. Section 8 is Resolutions, First Readings, are Items 8A through 8F. Section 9 of our agenda, our ordinances, first reading and related resolutions, are Items 9A through 9E. Our pending list is Section 10, Items 10A through 10C.
Anyone wishing to address the council on a matter not on this agenda and not plan to appear on a future agenda may do so at the open microphone session. Individuals are allowed a total of five minutes to speak regardless of the number of topics. For the month of July, open microphone sessions will be held on July 21st and July 28th. Since today is July 28th, we have public comment. Anyone from the public wishing to speak, please come forward.
My name is Anastasia Finner, I'm going to be waving my address for my safety. So this man here, I'll be reading what he says, because none of us speak Arabic, but he is on the ground in Gaza. He is a journalist, as you can see the decrepit nature of the bombed area behind him. But he goes on to say, "Clarification regarding the humanitarian aid that arrived in the Gaza Strip this morning. An Israeli occupation claims that it allowed parachutes carrying aid to be dropped into the strip. The planes that dropped this aid this morning were only three planes with a payload of 25 tons, which is less than a truckload of aid being received via the street. The Israeli occupation is deliberately continuing its policy of starvation by declaring to the world that it is bringing in humanitarian aid. However, on the ground in reality, the aid is far less than needed inside the Gaza Strip, which exceeds 600 trucks per day." And on that note, I would like to read an article by Sheya Howell. It says, "Gaza is starving, or Starving Gaza. There are moments when the pain of the world grabs hold of us. As brutality, greed, and violence accelerate, the assault on human beings and on the world that sustains our lives has been taken, has taken on a vicious force. The use of starvation as a weapon of war in Gaza is happening in front of the eyes of the world. In spite of the Israeli government's efforts to corral and kill journalists, the reality of what is happening now in Gaza is shaking the world at its core. The people of Gaza are being starved to death. They are being killed indiscriminately as they struggle for food. Their lives are falling into chaos and death." Michael Fekiri, UN Special Rapporteur on the Right to Food, said on Democracy Now!, quote, "This is the fastest famine we've seen, the fastest starvation campaign we've seen in modern history," end quote. The US is complicit in this death. Along with the Netanyahu government, the US forced the dismantling of UN-backed aid to Gaza and replaced it with a shadowy Gaza humanitarian foundation. There are few badly-run distribution sites have become new killing grounds as US mercenaries join Israeli soldiers in murdering those who seek food. More than 1,000 people have been shot to death. This use of food as a weapon has been a collaborative effort designed to undermine the UN and to place lucrative contracts into the hands of newly-formed obscure organizations. While US and Israeli propaganda tout the food distribution organizations as independent and neutral, the reality is far more sinister. As the New York Times reports, "The main group providing security is run by Philip F. Riley, a former CIA officer, and a fundraising group is headed by Jake Wood, a former US Marine, announcing the arrangement.